Okay, it is Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting, August 24, 2016. So I am calling the meeting to order. And at this time, we will have our invocation. And so let's have a word of prayer and ask Sister Sam to be with voice of prayer for us.
Heavenly Father God, we come to you this morning giving you the praise and glory for a beautiful day here. We ask Heavenly Father for blessings to our mourners today. Heavenly Father, there are many that are crying today. Be with our children, dear gods, as they go about their school day today. Heavenly Father, keep them safe. I ask that you be with our Pawnee people as they go about their business and as that you provide blessings to our tribespeople, Heavenly Father, and all those Indian people, Heavenly Father, throughout this nation. Be with our tribal council here, dear God, that we might be able to make good, sound business decisions for the people, Heavenly Father. And I am giving you all the praise and glory for all that we have. Ask us all in Christ Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Item number two, and that's the roll call.
Good morning, everyone. Bruce Pratt?
Here.
Dara Waukha?
Here.
Fanny Littleson?
Here.
Angela Thompson?
Present.
Sammy Adson?
Here.
Donna Hare?
Here.
Adrian Spotted Horse Chief?
Here.
Leanna Keaton?
Here.
All right, I declare a quorum. So we'll move to item number three, the approval of agenda. And I have a few things that were given to me for the agenda. On number one, the Presidential Committee Appointments. We have not only the Culture Committee, but also the Agreements Committee will be added. So we will add the Agreements Committee. On item number four, we will have discussion and/or action on Pawnee Nation Supreme Court Justice Position and Prosecutor's Position. So add that. Item number five, the, it says approval of Standing Bear. We will take out the "add for." It's just approval of Standing Bear tribal contribution. No "add for." Was that all I had? Okay? And any other additions?
Yes.
Yes?
I need to add the resolutions for the enrollment, or for resolutions.
I would like to add, I guess consensus for providing comments for the ITARA, the Indian Trust Reform Act. I attended that meeting this week and I did, and I'll report out, but I want to add that to the agenda.
Okay, so this, after item number seven, we need eight, nine, 10, and 11 on those resolutions?
We have Resolution 1677 on that.
Okay, enrollment? So that'd be eight, nine, 10, and 11. And then your item being number 12?
Yes.
All right, what?
Indian Trust Asset Reform Act of 2016.
Okay.
Comments, consensus?
Okay. All right. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, we can entertain a motion to accept the agenda with changes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
We have a motion, is there a second?
No second.
We have a motion, a second, any more discussion? Call for the vote.
Dara Waukha?
Yes.
Fanny Littleson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spotted Horse Chief?
Yes.
Leanna Keaton?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to item number four, and that's Pawnee Business Council President's Report. Just wanted to report that made a trip to Washington DC with our Executive Director. We were able to go see and have a meeting with the USDA on the ACTRA School Program that we submitted. They had USDA officers there, they had 4H, the National 4H Director there, they had, you know, all those folks there, and we had a good discussion with them. Before the meeting, we were able to secure a letter from Senator Langford?
Congressman.
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 Lucas, so many different visits. Congressman Lucas gave us a letter of support for this endeavor. Had a good discussion with them. Doesn't really look like this year, I mean, maybe, but maybe not. So we're still hopeful, but they really were supportive verbally, but nothing on paper. And so we are still going for that ACTRA School Program. Was able to talk with some of the Oklahoma leaders from USDA yesterday at a meeting down in Sulford, and had a personal visit with them over breakfast, and they're supportive. Their concern was where you getting the money, meaning that they're concerned with not taking any money from them. And so, but I reassured them, this is carryover money that we were looking for. And so we're very hopeful, and we need to continue to strive for this, and I think it's really would be beneficial to our kids and to this community. We were also able to go and visit with 477 there at the Department of the Interior. And so we made a visit over there. We also went and visited with Senator Langford at his office and updated them on our continued efforts there with oil and gas. And so that was a good meeting with his staff there. Also went and attended and spoke with IHS up there in Rock Hill and was trying to get a meeting with the MSPI folks for our grant. They were all out of the office, but met with some of the IHS staff and some of their folks, and they was gonna pass on our efforts to secure the MSPI grant there. So we went up to DC for that. Also attended the Budget Formulation, National Budget Formulation Meeting in Denver, the IHS budget. And so we are looking at this coming 2018, this is for the 2018 budget. We also discussed the 2017 budget, which will be coming up next year. We will have new leadership in the presidency, and so we're hopeful that with new leadership, maybe they will be, I guess the word would be, better accommodating to Indian health issues. And so we have submitted a budget, I believe, of $7.3 billion, which is a substantial increase over all the previous years, and so we're hopeful in that. Also attended the Pawnee Business Council quarterly meeting that we had, and we got through those meetings. That was a couple of weeks ago. Attended a strategic planning meeting. We primarily discussed the election ordinance and had a good meeting there and really moving forward on some changes with the election ordinance. Also attended the IHS meeting here at the Pawnee Service Unit and gave a report of the budget formulation and the different meeting there. IHS concluded their joint commission, and they got five more years on the joint commission, so they were very pleased with that. They had 6,253 visits in the month of July there at our service unit here, and so that was a good meeting. Also attended the school get-together with the tribe, and they brought the school teachers and the staff over here to the Rome Chief, and we fed them. And, you know, we just wanted to assure them of our support for the Pawnee Public School Systems. And we had a good meeting, we had a presentation by Councilman Adrian Spotted Horse Chief and by Allison Black on cultural sensitivity. And so it was, we had a good time and had good food together. And so that was that. And that's all, that's all that, the meetings that I attended, other than meetings around the office. Any questions?
Can you turn it up just a little bit?
Oh, okay. Maybe it's this one. How about that? Oh, okay. All right, no more questions, we'll go to item number five, and we will start on my ride with Adrian, and this is Pawnee Business Council Committee and Travel Report.
Good morning, everybody. I probably have too much to report on. I don't have too much to report on here. We had a Cultural Resource Meeting on the night, and they're gonna have, we're gonna have another meeting this Friday, and that's gonna be concerning a reburial. I don't exactly recall, it's kind of sad to say, but, you know, we have so many remains in many locations that I can't recall which one exactly it is specific to, but there's a, I don't know if it's a museum or a university or whatever that has the remains they're wanting to return, and we're discussing a possible reburial by next month. It's a kind of a quick turnaround, so we're kind of having a, like an emergency meeting this Friday. They also discussed, we also discussed about the Erykara visitation, when the Erykers were coming down, and they'll be here on the 23rd to the 25th, and there'll be a few others that'll come down a little bit sooner than the others to work with some language. But right now, the schedule that is planned is they're gonna have a hang game on Friday, the skeeti dance is gonna be on Saturday, and they're gonna have a kind of a powwow style dance on Sunday. And they're getting all the staff and everything in place, and I'm sure that they, I'm assuming that they have everything, all their staff in place up right now. I had made some comments here last meeting about the possibility of going to the Center for Native American Youth about trying to take an individual with the possibility of going to DC through Obama Administration. And the person that I was looking into, I went and talked to their parents, and they were all supportive of it, but I told, like I said here too, that it was gonna hinge, because they didn't know when the, when that was gonna take place in DC. They hadn't yet to take a, make the dates. And I said it was gonna hinge on if it was gonna be during the same time as the Erykara visit, because I was committed to that. And it ended up being that it was the same time, it was gonna start that same weekend. And the individual that I was looking at was gonna be involved with that as well. So that was the end of that. The Buffalo Project, I've been trying to talk to Campbell Burgess. I called him earlier this week and left a message, and I haven't heard back from him, but he sent an email to Andrew and myself. And he has been talking with these national parks, and he had talked to the Badlands National Parks, Wind Cave National Park, Theodore Roosevelt National Park, Grand Canyon National Park, Yellowstone National Park. And with each one, he talked about the possibilities of getting bison. And he is still in works with the Oto's and us. And just to kind of give you an update, you know, with the Badlands National Park, he said he wasn't too excited about them at the moment. Most of their animals are gonna go to the Intertribal Buffalo Council. Wind Cave National Park, he had, he said it was strong potential, needed to get a letter to him at some point. He said there were 70 to 80 buffalo up for grabs in 2017. The Theodore Roosevelt National Park, he said another strong potential, 90 to 100 animals up for grabs this year. And he said he was preparing a letter on our behalf as well as with the Oto's. Grand Canyon, he said it's just kind of somewhat promising. And Yellowstone National Park, he said that was probably the real most potential that was there. They have 48 bison that they're ready to give out immediately, so. So this is kind of some of the stuff that we're still working on at this time, and it's exciting to hear. And when I get some more information and stuff, I'll, you know, glad to share. And earlier this week too, or last week, Angela and I had a visit with some, with an individual concerning our opportunity to have events here. So I think that we've got a direction that we're heading towards, and we're gonna discuss with TDC here probably, I would say, next week, and then see about getting that started. So that's all the stuff that I have.
Thank you. I agree.
Yeah, I did have a question. Have you met with, are they with the business or?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was individuals, well, I'll just say, actually, his name's Ryan Stewart. He is our president of our Sports Commission, and he was the one that ran the Hard Rock Casino, and he actually works for the cause right now. So he was the one that we discussed about potentials, about different ways of having these events. So he kind of let us know the pros and cons of the business.
So if he's working on that end, is that a conflict of interest where he's president?
Not really, not at this point, because we haven't had an event yet. But once we have events, yes, then we'll be.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, Sam.
Thank you. I have a telecom with the Standing Bear Committee that's up at Ponka. Thank you for getting all of that in order for this today, they asked about that. And because it doesn't come to me directly, it has to come to you. I appreciate that. And really, nothing more than doing some more research on the land buyback, which we're still stuck. And I did make some networking with some of the team outside of the OSA, just because they've got that buyback program that's just kicking off, and had some discussions with a couple of the people that are championing that for them. And I've also put in and asked Cynthia to place a land management meeting for September the 7th at 4:00. I don't know how that's going to affect our calendar, I'm glad to swap that around, depending on what our schedules look like, but I'd like to move forward with that as well. It's gonna be kind of difficult with that program until we find and figure out how we're going to do the land into trust. I don't think that that is the capacity of that team, but I know that we can run that, so I'm glad to do that. That's all.
September 4th is?
September 7.
Oh, 7, okay. All right.
At 4.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fanny.
Good morning, everyone. So we had an enrollment meeting, which is the resolutions that are on the agenda. And then we have 25 new tribal members. Hooray. Well, I always get excited when I have a tribal that's first. So, but those all being resolution that we're gonna present here in the new business item. And I also had put the word out, just the enrollment meeting with people there, that what are these buildings named? So I threw that out there and got some feedback from some of the members that are on the Enrollment Committee, and their thoughts on it and everything. And then on Saturday, I attended the Nisharo Chiefs' meeting. Been a while, a few months since I've been able to attend it. I usually try to make those meetings, but they switch them and they never notify me. And then they had meetings on the calendar, and then they moved those meetings, changed those meeting dates. Anyway, I was able to actually attend this Nisharo meeting, and all the chiefs were present. They were basically the business, Herb Addison presented to them and let them know about what was going on with the Erykara visitation and the things that they're doing in the Culture Department. And then Junior Pratt, he mentioned a Cushing Heritage Festival going on in Cushing, I guess they invite all the local tribes to come up there and participate. So he was letting everybody know that date, which is September 10th, and they were inviting the Pawnee Business Council, Nisharo Council, and all the princesses. He let us know that they were having our contest, and I guess this year, the Saka Fox are putting on a powwow one o'clock. They have it right downtown, up the block, the street. And Jim Horn reported that he was monitoring for the tribes with pipelines going through, and he was asking the Nisharo Council to write a letter to support the Standing Rumpsoo Tribe and their fight against the pipeline. And he said that that company was violating their treaties, that they had treaties, and they were in clear violation of those treaties. He was putting a letter of support, we said, and we have the chiefs down there, and then Morgan Littleson reported that he was gonna go to North Dakota to support the Standing Rumpsoo, and that he could take that letter for them, if they wanted to go. And the chiefs all voted to give him some travel money to go over there with them, I think he said he was gonna be a week up there with them.
Can you turn your mic up?
Is that better? Nope? It's all the way up? Now?
Thank you.
I haven't realized the voice was the right. It was Harlan County, Nebraska, what Herb Addison reported on Adrian, for repatriation. And it was a core of engineers, that there were remains that needed to be repatriated, and that they were willing to pay for the repatriation, the core of engineers up there in Nebraska. And he was looking at the week after Labor Day for the repatriation date. And then he also reported that on September 13th is when the Pawnee Nation Language Program is gonna kick off, they're gonna start having their language in the evening, cultural classes afterward. The language classes will start at 6:30 to 7:30, and then cultural classes will be from 7:30 to 8:30. It's gonna be September 13th. And then, of course, he also reported to the chiefs about the Erykars coming the 23rd to the 25th. And then he let them know that the NAGPA grant got funded, and that they'll be hiring, or hiring an assistant to, I guess it's to develop a database, to build a database for the NAGPA program. And then they have several tribal members that were questioning about twin mounds out there, is that they wanted something done, because they believe that there are people buried out there. They went out and looked, they couldn't find no graves or anything, but they're gonna get with the Coll Nation, who have that machine that can find things underground, and so they're gonna borrow their machine to go over to Twin Mounds and see if there are any graves that they can locate out there. But meanwhile, they were wanting it to be fenced off and everything, because apparently people have been going out riding their four-wheelers and things like that, so that's a concern of theirs that they're looking into. And then I also mentioned to the chiefs that I would like the buildings to all be named, and that we had talked about enrollment, because of all, they really, there were some really awesome names that aren't used anymore in the Pawnee Nation, because the name has just died out, and so we were talking about possibly reviving the old names, or, but, you know, that, that was something I wanted to see, that our buildings could all have names on them, tribal names, besides Building 64, et cetera, et cetera. Kind of bring us out of the boarding school. Because to me, that Building 64, they still refer all the buildings over there on that campus as boarding school, you know, that, oh, that was the girls dorm, that was, you know, the boys dorm, and like that, and I would like to see it just brought out of that era, like those buildings, that's when we can give them new names, and like the one is the teacher's headquarters, I don't even know what the number is for that building, but it's the one the college uses. But things like that, that's something that I would like to see. So I brought that up to the chiefs too. And then Pat Lady Fox also was thanking the chiefs, because apparently quite a few of them went to Anna Darkbo to support his daughter, who was the princess down there. They made a real good showing for the Pawnee Nation, and so he was real thankful, because his daughter was real excited that they were there to support her. And so that was, all that was discussed and said, it was actually a short meeting, I'm so surprised, because a lot of times, those chiefs meetings can go on till the afternoon, but they kind of got everything discussed and said and decided right away, so. And other than that, I had been scheduled to go to a meeting in Tulsa, but I wasn't able to make that meeting. I got my dates mixed up, and then, of course, my car's broke down, so I didn't really have no way to get over there, so. And then we were having our strategic planning, and there was just a lot of things that were going on that I didn't realize was the same time my travel was, so I just canceled my travel and just stayed here to take care of the things I needed to take care of, so. That's my report. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Fanny. We'll move on to Vice President.
I recently, on August 11th, attended the Council of Confederated Shilohco Tribes. That's the Coll Nation, Ponka Tribe, Ponkwa Tribe, and Oto, Missouri, as well as Pawnee Nation. What it discusses, the upcoming lease that's going to be renewed in 2017. Mostly discussed about what's going on on the Shilohco campus. The OSU University Multi-Spectral Laboratories is the lease, and they set leased it to the Department of Defense, and they do kind of special ops training out there, so the place is kind of off limits. I have to have authority of some kind to tour the campus and see what's going, what they're doing out there. I think they do simulate chemical warfare, and they're testing materials there. What they want to do, the council is add on to their lease, well, they would like to, is renovate the whole place, but because of so much asbestos on the property, it's not feasible financially, so they're just trying to do what they can. And what they were looking at is renovating the armory there, it needs a new roof. It, it, and then it needs a new roof. So they're going to, uh, look, um, toward adding that to the upcoming lease. So that's, uh, and they, they will meet again on, uh, August, uh, not next week, uh, the 31st. And they were, and they're looking to, signing, um, a resolution to the effect of what I've just discussed, of adding on the renovations of the, to the armory there. That's all I have at this time.
Right. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to Angela.
Good morning, everybody. Um, I attended the, um, strategic planning and I'm not gonna go into detail on that because everybody's already fully had attended, um, as well as the, um, sport, I mean, the, looking into having the events, the fighting events here at the gymnasium. And we had a couple of options to, um, determine in regard to, um, after meeting with Mr. Stewart, he, he was very informative and kind of gave us the pros and cons. And, um, and my main concern is the, um, haven't had my cup of coffee on, is my, uh, is the, um, the revenue, the return, as well as, um, any liability regarding limited sovereign wa, waiver of sovereign immunity in entering into these agreements if the council or the tribal government takes on this, this role. Anyway, so we'll be bringing those options to you all, um, to, it's either to, either hand it over to TDC and direct them to say, "We want this to happen, make it happen." Or, um, "We take on the liability and the responsibility of it, but it's gonna take some upfront money, um, approximately anywhere from 30,000 to 40,000." We also looked at the op, uh, option of, uh, creating our own department with, on, on the tribal government side. Um, but what I kept hearing is that the gaming, the reason why gaming has events is to bring people to the casino. That's where they make the revenue. They do not make the revenue off the actual ticket sales or the shows. It's mainly bringing people in so we can get them to our casino. Um, so with that being said, uh, we're leaning more towards look, a meeting with, we wanna meet with TDC and see where they, they are so that, um, we can discuss these options and then bring it back to council and then direct them. So that's a little bit, adding a little bit more to what Adrian has stated. And, um, so we're looking at that and we'll bring it back.
If you don't mind, a challenge. I don't know if these things are working or not. Okay. Um, you know, uh, one of the things that was kind of disappointing was, is that, you know, I was hoping that we could be able to have some additional revenue for the, for the council here so that we can, um, uh, help with some of these different programs that, that have needs or things like that. But, one of the things that we had kind of looked at is if this was gonna help us to, if it was gonna help TDC to kind of bring that loan, you know, less, less as, as a long-term, you know, to try to get that loan paid off, then that's the right way to go.
Right. Right. That was the other big discussion. Thank you, Adrian. Um, the other, the meeting, the second meeting I attended, um, as far as travel, is, I just returned from Albuquerque, attending, um, the Indian Trust Asset Reform Act of 2016 that has already been passed, but the, it's kind of backwards because they're doing tribal consultation after the fact. Um, and so, um, I wasn't aware of anything of HR 812 until I had a talk with Carrie Mason Moore at a, at another meeting. And, um, she informed me of it. And so that's why I requested to go because what I had heard was that it's not really out there, the federal side saying that they're trying to do away with OST, but it looks like that's the movement where they're going because the main discussion was where do, um, where do tribes want to put some of these functions at OST, which, which to me is looking at reducing some of their functions and services and activities so that they can minimize it and say it's no longer needed. A lot of the consensus at, at the meeting was that we do not want, um, another entity established through the BIA. We do not want the BIA handling those OST functions. Um, nor do we want to diminish any of the trust responsibility because of this act. And so I, when I, um, I did stand up and make a comment, I want to let you all know that, uh, my comment was it was unofficial because I wanted to bring it back to the council to get an official response. Um, and I'll go into more detail about that, um, in, on the agenda item, but, um, I would like, I would like for us to provide comments to, um, make OST permanent, leave all the functions at OST, and, um, we do not want it at the BIA. The BIA has, you know, the reason why OST was created, we all know, is to handle mismanagement. So, um, but it was a very good meeting. Um, got a lot of information and I'll be presenting that up on the agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Move on to Leanna.
Okay. Good morning. Um, I really only attended the same health board meeting that Bruce did. And he already spoke about it, so that's my report. Any questions?
Donna here.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Uh, I have no travel report on. I attended the strategic planning that everybody else reported out on. I attended the enrollment committee that Fanny, um, reported on. And I wanna say that she did an excellent job in relaying what we discussed, uh, in, in there, in that meeting about, um, the names of the buildings and, and the names, um, some of the beautiful names that our, that our tribe had and there's, um, that, you know, are in existence anymore. And there's a lot of interest in, you know, um, talking about those names and letting people know about those names. So we'll probably continue, you know, those discussions in the enrollment committee. Uh, with HR, we will be meeting next Monday and just continuing our, um, policy formulation. Our, our meetings are scheduled on Wednesday, but those have been kind of not bumped for, um, strategic planning. So we're looking, um, to have a, establish a meeting day on Mondays and we'll, uh, one Monday a month. And we'll talk about that in our meeting on, uh, Monday and see how that's, that's gonna work for the committee. That is my report.
I have one more comment to report up to the council. Um, I took the opportunity because the director of, of BIA was there, uh, Mike Black, and I, I had a sidebar with him. And, and Clint Hastings, who is the assistant to the, uh, office of the Assistant Secretary, and informed them of some of our, um, environmental issues and fracking issues with Crown and affecting our tribal members. And he took notes and he's gonna look into it. So, just wanted to let you all know that.
All right. There's no more, uh, reports, then we will move to item number six. Pawnee Business Council Travel Request for Approval. Start down here with Donna. Come back this way.
I have no requests.
Okay. Leanna?
I have no, I don't see them.
Okay.
No, no requests.
All right. I am, uh, requesting travel for, on, uh, September the 25th and September the 26th is the Tribal Leaders Summit with President Obama. And that's in DC, so, um, information came out yesterday on that. So asking for, uh, travel for that. Also, I am, uh, asking for travel for the NCAAI Conference in October, um, 9th through the 13th, it looks like. So asking, uh, travel for that. And, uh, also, um, requesting, um, one more council person to go. And, uh, thought about Sammy, uh, going to NCAAI in, uh, in San Diego this year, so. Anyway, in discussion.
What are the dates on that?
Uh, the 9th, well, actually it'll be the 10th through the 14th. This is not October. And the reason why we're, we're asking so early is, uh, book the hotel and get the early, early bird. Uh, Daryl?
Um, I have, uh, I have one question for travel to, uh, attend the, uh, Council of Confederated, uh, Shilohco Tribes. They meet again on, um, the 31st of, um, August at First Council up there in, uh, New Kirk. That's all the request I have.
And, uh, Daryl had, uh, sent, sent to you the, um, this stand down that they're having in Oklahoma City for the veterans.
Oh, yes.
That's, that's coming up too, so would like you to go if you can.
Okay, I, I was gonna talk to you about that. Yeah, sure. Put it down.
Okay.
What did it say?
I, I don't know, I have to look at it.
I have to look that up too.
All right. Fanny?
Um, I don't know. Uh, did we get my travel for that renewable energy conference? Last, last council meeting, do you recall? Yeah, in Denver, Colorado. It's September 7th and 8th. I don't know, we mentioned it, the last one and...
It was strategic planning.
Oh, was it a strategic, I'm sorry. Well, I'm getting confused. Well, this is, it's September 7th and 8th though. Um, Bruce had presented this and wanted somebody to go, so I said I'd be willing to go to it. Here's the paper if you need it.
We have it.
Oh, do you have the information? Okay. No, I'm requesting it. And I'm very interested, I really like, went to NCAAI Conference and I'm really interested in going to that, um, cause I, I just learned so much and it's just...
What are the dates?
He was, he said it was the 10th or the 8th.
No, yours.
Oh, this one is, uh, September 7th and 8th. It's in Denver, Colorado.
All right. Uh, Sammy?
Um, yes, I don't actually have any, any travel except I'm gonna be going up to Ponca next month, you know, I'll be up there for three days for that standing.
Okay.
I'm just gonna go back and forth, so we should have an impact, but can I have mileage? Okay. We're gonna dig in.
Yeah, this, this is...
Why that? I didn't see the party. I'm just gonna be there, I'm a rep.
I'm a social worker. And I have to go, I have to pass.
I never... When is it, May? It's the same weekend as the Rickaros are gonna be here, which kind of is bothersome to me, but it's going to be, um, Sept-20, September 23rd, 24th, and 25th. I mean, I didn't ask for a room. At the OSH Casino. I wasn't trying to work, you guys.
The OSH Casino's right there.
I know.
You can't.
And I live in Cleveland, so how would that happen?
Um, I don't have anything. Um, I don't know if I'm gonna keep turning this thing off or on. Um, there's, you know, we're talking about here a little bit later on about this, uh, Dakota, uh, Standing Rock Sioux. And I think there's a, a, um, a rally down at the state capitol coming up soon. And I didn't know if you knew that, if you was gonna attend that or not.
I didn't, I didn't hear about that.
I thought I saw that somewhere and I did, I just thought it'd be good if, if, if you or somebody went down there and supported that or whatever. If I could find more information, I'll email it out.
Okay. Well, I heard I was supposed to be up in North Dakota right now.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're, they're all expecting the Pawnee president up there. But actually, it's the chiefs that are on their way up there, not, not the president, so.
Um, I would just like to make a comment on the, um, the travel. We have, um, we have a balance of $16,222 in the travel line item. This is as of 8/18. Um, but I know that we have moved, um, money around, I believe, um, PBC mod number seven's on the agenda as well, so I don't know if this is up to date as of, as of that agenda, but I just want to, uh, keep the council aware that, um, we're narrowing down to through December, so we need to be, um, brutal and cognizant of, of those costs.
He says always with the cover open.
I'm not doing anything through that. Um, and so just be cognizant and that, I think that's one, uh, reason why we are requesting that if we do have some of these national conferences that only do, um, representatives attend and then bring back the information, uh, because of those costs and that's...
Yeah, and, and you know, and I really agree with, anytime that we're spending tribal money for travel, it should really be bringing something back.
Yes.
You have to bring something back. If we're, if we're just going to go because I like, I wanna go to Florida, well, that, that's not the right decision. So I agree and we all should be cognizant like it's our own checkbook.
Thank you.
Zeke, Zeke is in Florida.
Okay. Did, did we discuss the, um, BIA meeting, um, the regional office meeting? And I think we discussed that in strategic planning. I don't know if we did in the meeting.
Yeah, they, they gave it, us a date in October and so, um, she's, she's on the...
Yeah, I'm on the committee.
So usually her and I can, so, uh, go ahead, put that one in there. Uh, the dates are coming, but I got a letter.
It's in October.
Yeah, so.
Can you talk more on that one? What, what was that one?
It's the Southern Plains Regional, um, Office, um, meetings that they have locally to bring all the tribes together before the next TBIC meeting. The next TBIC meeting is in November, so we try to meet as a regents to get all of our information together and so that the representative, representatives can take it forward and present at TBIC.
Is this the one where they had, uh, all, all aspects from the BIA, like, um...
They usually have social services, law enforcement, um...
One year they, they were discussing fracking?
Yes, yes.
And then stuff? Okay, okay. I, I attended that, uh, a couple of years ago. It was in Oklahoma City. It was just like two days.
Yeah, they're gonna have it in Tulsa. They tried to switch it from one area to the others on the others.
Did you wanna go?
Uh, if, if you sure don't, that's good.
Okay. Okay. Any other travel requests? Okay, an entertaining motion to, uh, accept the travel request?
Um, I make a motion to approve the travel request, but, um, I would like more of a report before you go to meet with Obama so that we can weigh in on what, what you will be taking forward on behalf of the nation. Thank you.
Uh, in, in, in hearing about that meeting, um, the, um, White House meets personally with six tribal leaders. They usually meet with six that have been on council, I mean, three that have been on council for a long time and three that do it once. So, they, they, they let you know if you, you were selected or not, so I don't, I don't, I don't see myself being selected, but if I were selected, then that's where you could really present to, to him, um, things. Otherwise, you meet in a big room and he just comes in, meets with the tribal leaders. So, uh, but, but yes, we, we need to get in, and that's good. So we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion's second. All those, uh, who approves, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? No. So that moves forward. So let's move on to item number seven, the ED report, Executive Director, Mr. Andrew Nauchy. Director, Mr. Andrew Nauchy.
Good morning, Council.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, boy, this last couple of weeks since our last meeting has been busy. Uh, we, we've got a lot of stuff done here at the, uh, the nation. Uh, we finished with our wage scale and which we're gonna present to the HR committee, so that's a great thing. Um, we also are, uh, have completed, completely finished scrubbing all of the job descriptions so that they're uniform across all areas, um, which is gonna help improve HR efficiency. Um, we, we, I need to, uh, this, this, by the end of this week, we need to arrange our quarterly meetings with the BIA to be able to further our discussions between them with the, with respects to our issues with, um, the leases and the APVs and the water rights and all that. Um, as President had mentioned, I did travel with him to DC, it was a good, uh, visit, the brief. Unfortunately, I flew Delta, so I left here like three hours late and arrived in DC about seven hours late, but that's what Delta was behind. Uh, the thing that surprised me was Senator Nyford, as he used to impress me. Uh, he, we talked about the after school program and that kind of thing. He wasn't even involved in this process, but he requested a copy of the proposal, so that was another good sign as well. And, um, we are still in the process with the BIA as far as the communitization agreement is our concern. We did mailouts, the Attorney General did mailouts, so we also recently sent a letter explaining why the nation was appealing the CAs. Specifically, we wanted to let our tranches know what, what the appeal means to them as, as interested mineral owners, what it does affect and what it does not affect. Um, you know, I've, I've received some phone calls from folks that are upset about the, our appeal because they think it's directly tied to their decrease in their royalty payments. Um, and I had explained to them, no, actually, a CA is, is worse for your royalty percentage because it adds more people into the pot, it doesn't take away people from the pot. So, uh, but we, we sent a letter out explaining that to our citizens. Uh, we finished with our budget hearings, the budget hearings went well, I'm very proud of the staff, Mary O'Grady and Harrison Perry especially, they worked very hard and, man, it just, even though we, we, we were a little behind in getting it to the PBC for final approval, it's rock solid. And that was the most important thing about the budgets in, in my mind was that it wasn't rushed to meet the deadline that we said it was, that we completed it and that it was, uh, everything that it needed to be so that we don't have any issues coming up in the future. We know we're rock solid, we know exactly where we stand financially as a nation, that's the most important thing. Um, so we're continuing to release the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Uh, I had a meeting this morning with Jeremy, I had it scheduled before you all changed the, the, the PBC date, so I had to go meet with him early this morning, but it was a good meeting. Um, you know, we, we talked over some few things and kind of what the expectations I have with him and him and Abi, so we're gonna continue building on that relationship and moving forward with, um, our discussions to solve our issues with our leases and our, our water rights. Uh, we did receive the funding for our water rights, uh, the process, um, we received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, fifty thousand is going to, uh, NORF to do the legal research and history necessary to qualify our water rights. Uh, basically, they're looking into when we purchased the land from the Cherokees and the Creeks, uh, on, with the money that we used or that we got from selling our land as you know, uh, what rights can we purchase from them? Because if we all remember the Cherokees and Creeks, they're, they're different than us. They didn't come here on trust land, they actually came here on restricted fee land. They, they purchased this Indian territory, uh, under restricted fees, so, uh, and the restriction was basically they couldn't alienate the lands, meaning they couldn't sell the lands without, without permission of the federal government. Uh, but they had all, all the other rights of fee landowner and CAS, which is the rights to water, the rights to, you know, the resources and all that stuff. So we need to find out exactly what we purchased from the Cherokees and Creeks, not go a long way to establishing our water rights. The, another, the hundred thousand is going to the US Geological Survey, which is already started, the, uh, scope of work, uh, they've been in discussion with Monty and Helen Percy and, uh, they are, are, have made a plan, formulated a plan and are gonna start working on it. The good thing is for us is that they, they had, they, the USGS recently did work for the Osage Nation, um, on their water rights and a part of the Osage boundary is the Arkansas River Basin, so there's a lot of data on the Arkansas River Basin, which will save us some time and money because they already have it in their possession. And, uh, so they're gonna start with Black Bear Creek, that's where they're gonna start, it's the, the main, uh, resource around here for our aquifers through the middle of the county. So we're gonna start with that. All, all the creeks north of sixty-four, or I mean, north of fifty-one and, and south of, gosh, up near highway fifteen feet into the Black Bear, so it's a pretty big, uh, system. So that's where they're gonna start. This is gonna be a multi-year project. The good news for us is once we're in the funding pipeline, you know, it's just a matter of renewing the funding source every year because, uh, they, by, by statute, they're, they're, once we start the process of water rights or water plan, then they have to fund it until it's finished. Uh, so they, it takes a long time, but it usually, um, it, it, it just means good news for us. Uh, we have prepared a water briefing for Senator Nyford, per his request. Uh, the water briefing explains our water rights as we understand them now. Um, this is not to say that it's, it's based on a firm legal foundation because we haven't bought our water rights yet. We are, and I'm still, I'm working hand in hand with the Attorney General, uh, developing their legal responses to our trust and water rights issues. Uh, you know, it, it, it looks like, um, it looks like we need to be prepared for everything and anything under the sun, so we're gonna prepare, we're gonna prepare that way. Uh, I've had very fruitful discussions with Herb Justice and, uh, NORF about supporting our efforts on these communitization fields and everything else. Uh, they're, they're gonna put together documents so that they can memorialize our relationships with them. Uh, the reason being is, you know, this is a, it just protects the nation for our discussions we've had with Herb Justice and NORF and it's just good business practice. Um, the last thing, we have developed an intensive training schedule for our employees. Uh, one, one of the things that I, I wanna do here is develop our entry level employees and our, our middle managers and prepare them for their next days of their, their life, which is, you know, for middle managers, hopefully it's, it's directors' positions and for, for employees, it's, it's supervisor roles. Um, we have, I, I felt we've had no, uh, training in the past couple of years on that, so we're starting on September fourteenth, we have an all-day affair, uh, with HR and I, we put together a PowerPoint presentation, it's gonna be led by myself and, and Matt Bellinger, and it's gonna be the start of the process to train our managers on how to be responsible supervisors, um, and how to, how to apply or how, what our expectations are for them in applying HR policy fairly and soundly to all situations. Uh, this'll only help, um, you know, I, I get a lot of things dropped before my desk and, and I, I feel like they're, they're bringing it before my desk because they, they don't know, they don't know what to do. And that's on us, we need to train them up, so that's what we're gonna do. So September fourteenth, we're starting with all managers, coordinators and supervisors and that's gonna be an all-day affair. And then, uh, the next, uh, segment, the month after that, it'll be with, uh, employees, only employees and staff, and we'll train them how to be managers and supervisors and we'll tell them about the policy, but we won't make it land. Uh, this is all about, you know, now that we've entered, uh, implemented or we have implemented, now that we've developed the wage scale, part of the wage scale is experience and training and certificates. Well, you know, we wanna motivate our employees to get involved in, in these training sessions so that they can, you know, move up in their pay scale and, 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 and look forward to applying for jobs in supervisory positions and not stuck in the same job over and over. But we as a nation need to do, do better at developing our employees and so that's what we're starting to do. And, uh, that concludes it, concludes my presentation. Any, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I've had some questions from, um, landowners about the community decision.
Yes, ma'am.
And they have the appeal in front of them, um, but they just don't understand it. I have a couple elders. So, I, did you say you sent a letter out?
Yeah, I mean, uh, the Attorney General sent a letter of explanation out following. We had deadlines for that and so we had to get those, those appeals out first and then we have a letter of explanation all around behind it, so they should be, most of them should be out there or they should be getting one shortly.
Okay.
And, and it basically explains how the CA is, is a, is a, is a method for energy companies to, to drain entire basins of people, so even though you don't have a well on your property, they're draining it, uh, which means that you as a, as a landowner, as a mineral resource landowner, instead of just you getting paid for what's on your property, uh, now that these, you know, these communitization agreements allow for everybody in that whole range and township to be compensated, which limits your pool. So if your lease says that you're entitled to twelve percent of the compensation, uh, for, for production, well, your, your twelve percent is based on how many areas you have on your land and plus now under the communitization, how many other areas and how many fee landowners, because the fee guys, the, the fee landowners can pay as well, so it just adds more people to the, the revenue pot. Of course, the energy companies don't care because they, they, they make more money by pulling, by communitization, because they can pull from much broader area. But we explained it. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
I, I just wanted to say I saw the playground quit.
Yes, I forgot about the special playground. Uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, it's gonna be finished Friday. Uh, Taro's got, uh, four workers out there and the, the, they're missing a couple of pieces, I guess, that they could ship, but that's okay, it'll be, it'll be straightened out. We're gonna Friday to be complete and, uh, the operational, well, it's good, you know, it's, it's got a canopy there and we're excited about it, absolutely, and, and we, um, we're, we're looking forward to adding, I've, I've been talking with, uh, Hogg and Pride and adding stuff like that to bring, uh, make our place attractive for our community to come visit, you know, and have a place for them to, to all, you know, that they feel like they can come here and play, so. Yes, ma'am?
I like the location.
One more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I had, um, tribal elder want to express her appreciation to Taro for the mowing that they'd done, um, and I've had several, um, express that, so I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
What's the funding for that?
For what?
I know that, I know that they quit mowing because they didn't have money to mow.
Yeah, the, the, they had to stop, uh, because what, what it was, was they, they, Taro's, Taro's budget is, is pretty tight anyway, but they have to pay those employees to, to work the, the yards, and so what they did was they were soliciting or trying to solicit paying customers to do the yards so that they could provide the free yard service to our elders because we didn't have, Taro doesn't have the funds to support, uh, paying the, the extra employees they needed plus the resources necessary to mow. And unfortunately, they weren't able to get enough paying customers, even though it was rock bottom price, I think it was like forty bucks for a cut, trim. Uh, they weren't getting enough paid employees or paid, uh, customers in order to support the, the tribal elders. Now, I've had, I've been to every Taro meeting so far since, um, I guess since June, uh, and my, my focus is, is to get them, uh, realizing that they're missing out on a lot of different revenue streams around here, that they can come, that they can bring more money into the nation and increase their budget to, to support these types of endeavors. Uh, with what we're going on now, what Taro's working on now, it's, it's to, it's tap out, I mean, it's maxed out on what it can, what it can bring into the program. And so I've been working with, with Taro, I've, I've talked with the commissioners, the commissioners are on board as well. Don's, actually, Attorney General was there on that meeting, the, the last meeting we went to, and we are working with them to take their focus off of, you know, what they have now and start really focusing on managing our prior jurisdiction, which is not justified here. Yes, ma'am? And agriculture and timber and all kinds of stuff we have on, on our property. As a matter of fact, that brings me up to another thing, I've also, the last two tax meetings I've attended, because I'm, I'm doing tax the same way, we have to get them focused from, because again, they're, again, they, they've tapped out the resources here. There's, they've squeezed our citizenry that lives here for pretty much everything we've got, you know, and, and we need to focus on our entire jurisdiction because we're responsible for our entire jurisdiction. We just can't look to what's on our campus and what's in our town. Um, that's, that's too short of a, a vision and we need to, we need to extend our, our range of influence, uh, because we, we have all this, all this jurisdiction and all this land and we don't know what's going on with it. In the meantime, people are coming here and, you know, using our resources to their advantage to make a profit and we just wanna be able to effectively administer and regulate. Yes, ma'am? Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Um, so if the, I've, I received the same phone call too in regard to Taro that they were just very upset or disappointed that that program had ended in the lawn, but they also said that they offered to pay, but said that Taro, they were told by Taro that they couldn't do that.
Told to pay?
Right, they were willing to pay whoever to come out and do their lawn, but was told that they could not do that.
I'll have to talk with the, the commissioners, I, I don't remember that being part of the discussion, I, I just thought it was because they weren't, they didn't have the money coming in to support it, but I'll, I'll ask, I'll talk to the commission.
Okay, please, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, I wasn't aware that they had to quit mowing, I was just expressing gratitude, but I'm glad it opened that conversation because...
Well, it quit last week or, or two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it was last week.
Yeah. So you'll be getting the calls this week.
From the same people. That's okay, we, we tried, we tried and, and, you know, they just need, they just need to find better and get more re-employment into the program. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I was just gonna ask about your, uh, you said you got the wage, wage scale done and that was included in the budget?
No, well, it, it already is built in...
Was that gonna be in twenty seventeen or...
Yeah, it's, it's already built into the, to the budgets, we, we built it into the budgets, we base it off of what we pay our salaries anyway, it's just that for now, like, for instance, if, if, if TPO, um, has a wage scale already built in that we're gonna pay from, let's say, sixteen, twenty-five an hour, twenty dollars, okay? Well, what the wage scale does is take that built-in number that's in the budget anyway, but we apply certain factors and criteria. So if you come in and if you apply for the TPO position and you only need a minimum level of training, a minimum level of education, whatnot, then you will start out by policy on the lower end of the wage scale and as, and that'll incentivize the, the new person to get the training, certification, education they need to move up in the wage scale. So by the, by, hopefully if they, through experience and education and training, you know, within a couple of years or two years, we can, we can raise them up because now we have a set of factors that we can judge them by, we can raise it to twenty dollars an hour. But it's already, it's already built into the, the working budgets that we have, it's just a way of applying it to, to new hires and all that other stuff.
Okay, that, that was my question.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I just wanted to, um, make a comment about, um, you're doing a good job.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you for your, your effort.
Now, I have to refer to the council because I'll be gone next week, uh, to the, I have unfinished business with the historic preservation side, I have to take care of specifically with related to a cemetery located in Kansas, South Dakota, the High, High Office, Central Simon for St. Indians, it's terrible. Uh, but I have, I have business that I need to take care of there, um, it was a lot of material, um, and it's not that I didn't, I didn't trust Article to do it, it's just that I have all the working knowledge, it took me eight months to build all that knowledge and it needs to be settled this year, so instead of adding that to John Michael's shoulders because he's already got enough to take part in, I'm gonna have to go up there and finish off that business. Um, and then after that, I'm going to take a vacation, I'm tired. Two years here and I haven't had, you know, vacation and I'm just, I'm getting tired, so I'm gonna have to do that, but, uh, you know, hopefully it'll be a good vacation, I'm trying to convince all my dad, it's convinced me, but my dad, everybody's trying to convince our family, all the men are thinking of going to Nebraska and about for, you know, go to look and go to Janelle and go to our sites and stuff like that.
On motorcycles?
Eh, no.
That was light.
You probably got a Harley in that garage.
No, that's for slick and shot, that's not for me. I'm not a motorcycle guy, I'll never spend vacation with them. And that was probably because when I was a kid, he had one, my dad had one and, and when he was in residency and... And that was probably because when I was a kid, he had one, my dad had one, and when he was in residency, Milwaukee made him get rid of it after six months, because he already had like six tickets. There's a hundred miles an hour on that. It pulls my eyes. So now he traumatizes me somehow, but, anyway, that's my presentation, so.
Thank you. I just have one more question, and it may not involve you, and maybe this is an Angela question, but, and it does involve the Taro. So they're generating income, and they're putting, we're getting money and put it into a bucket of our general fund. Why can't we move some of the dollars over just to get those elders mowed down until, you know, the fall?
We looked at this, because Taro submitted a double budget for twenty seventeen. We looked at their revenue. We have been carrying the Taro program. I believe the last report I got is the total operating cost that we've received since inception of Taro was five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Their budget last year was two hundred and forty thousand. So they're, right now, we've been carrying, their expenditures totaled up to about six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. So we are carrying that program, general fund is carrying it. Even though that they have income coming in, it hasn't been sufficient like for, from thus far in the year twenty sixteen, they brought in fifty-two thousand, three eighty-eight.
Does that include TDC? Has TDC paid their funds?
I.
They got a, they just got a new, they just received a one.
The last page, they made the fourth quarter payment for fifteen.
Yeah.
Recently, they haven't received anything officially for the sixteen there.
Yeah.
See, they haven't paid anything for this year, that's the problem, TDC's not paying.
Well, I mean, and the other problem is, is like, Taro, and this is my opinion, and this is why I'm arguing with the commissioners about this, is they have, they're always, they max out what they can get a year. So what I don't want this, what I don't want to happen is this to be how we do business with Taro, because I want Taro to succeed. And in order for Taro to succeed, of course, it's gonna take resources. But the only way I can justify increasing their budget and giving them a budget is if we see their revenue stream is changing or increasing. And that's what we want to do, but we have to focus on our entire jurisdiction.
Well, let's just get back to the.
Oh, you're talking about.
Elder lawns. So how are we gonna, can we do that? Is there anything in there that we can, I mean, how much is it gonna cost to mow lawns?
I don't, I don't know, and I have not received any request for any.
Additional.
Additional funds. I know that there has been discussions, and I did receive the whole breakout, how much it was gonna cost, because they're already, their budget's down.
Yeah, exactly.
They're zeroed out. They've expended all their dollars. So I think Laura did a calculation, and Finance did work together to do a calculation to see how much they're gonna need to meet their, just their payroll.
Yeah.
To the end of the year. And, but I have not received anything officially from anybody requesting additional dollars to supplement or to add to it. The only other revenue sources that we can pull from is Salliser or proceeds of labor.
Right.
And, you know, we've been trying to hold off on appropriating any of those. So it's, we're gonna have to come up with that, because we're gonna have to see them through the month of December anyway, so.
Yeah, and we have, I have had that discussion with the commission as well, and I've worked with Steve, Steve's been working with Finance to, but he just, he hasn't brought anything to us yet to take action on.
But I think the council, I mean, I posed this to the council, I mean, I'm willing to utilize Salliser dollars to keep that program going, if the council's on board with that as well. I mean, that, just that function.
I think, and I think everything should be on the table, but I can't answer that question.
It was just a question.
No, it's a good question, but I can't answer it, because I, there, Steve's still working with Finance to give me a complete picture of where the budgets are. I just don't know. So that would tell, that would go a long way to determine what we bring to the Budget Committee for approval. That's something we can do.
Yeah, we have the equipment.
And it's only what, two months?
Yeah, it's, yeah. And I don't know how many lawns are getting done, but I know there's some happy people out there. I'd be happy, I'd save my forty bucks a week.
I was gonna be sure, because I woke up the other day, it's fifty degrees in the morning. So what the heck, this is on, this is all, oh, my.
So would they include, have a pin?
Yes, ma'am. It includes elders who live in our jurisdiction.
Okay. How do you find it?
You have to contact Taro.
Taro?
But right now, they're not, they're not doing it, because you gotta figure out the budget situation.
You can pay it? Or is that what you?
That, that's, I don't know.
I think maybe, maybe whatever you could afford, or if you can't afford it, then don't worry about it, kind of thing. But it's pricey, I mean, once you start getting, once at like a hundred and sixty a month? You have my yard money.
Yeah, and you charge the forty bucks. I don't know what I did.
Yeah. Any news? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
I just want to say a little bit, you know, you know, I think, I think you've been doing a great job. You know, you've been here, like you said, a long time, and you do a lot of stuff. We ask you to do a lot of stuff, and I know you're doing the things too as well, and things that need to be done. And myself, you know, I want to support you in taking a break. I don't want you to get burned out, you know, we talked yesterday and stuff, and I think sometimes that might be one of our problems that we have here too, is we demand a lot of our staff, you know, and so I just want to encourage you to, you know, take your, take your break, your vacation, and have a good time, you know. Come back, get ready to work again.
Yeah, leave your phone, I'll hold phone.
My big uncle is telling me the same thing, but of course, I also reminded him that we're both the same type of individual, and he doesn't understand a stop here. So we kinda have to be forced to do it, and I've just kinda decided that, you know, it's coming up on a year, a year in this position, and two years with the nation, so I'm probably just gonna take a break, so.
Enjoy.
Thank you, Council.
You too.
I have a quick question. I came in on the middle of this, what did you decide about mowing lawns? Even though because of the. I'm willing to pay.
Yeah. We, the last discussion I had with the commission and the director was that they were no longer able to provide the free mowing service to the elders because they didn't get enough paying customers. Now, the treasurer brought up that she was told by an elder that called her that she offered to pay, and they still wouldn't do it. Okay, well, I don't, I don't know. She didn't say that, she just said hello. I didn't hear that from the commission, so I need to find out, I need to talk with the director and the commission to find out exactly if, if what they told, what I understood is true, or what you understood is true. So I need to find out.
Well, the girl that I spoke to, I told her that it was really bad.
Okay, well, I'll talk to the director, so, we'll get the figure down, the commission answered.
Okay, well, how am I gonna let you be there?
Call your treasurer. I'll send him emails to the council.
I don't need you.
No, to the council.
And I'll call you in. And I'll see you.
They said this crazy elder called.
I didn't know. It's an important, it's an important thing.
Hey, I vote me to watch.
All right, did, thank you, Andrew. Did, did you send out your report to the council?
I did, I gave it there.
Yeah, so are there any questions for? A G?
One thing I want to do, Council, take a look at that, this book is, my sister gave me that book. This book is written by a pro oil guy. If you look to take a look at its, it's unbelievable. But take a look at it, I think it wasn't so, it's amusing but sad at the same time.
Trying to make us mad?
No, he and I were looking at it, and we were laughing and mad at the same time. A lot of what Andrew said, he and I, there's a lot of overlap there. The environmental issues, we've got a lot of appeals coming up. I did two, five hundred and fifty-nine mailouts. I've got a FOIA request pending. My theory is, when they do show up with what I requested, they're gonna show up in a two-ton FedEx truck. So who knows how much that's gonna be to go through. And then I've been, in addition to the report, I've been helping Andrew with some of that HR issues. Andrew is right when it comes to Taro. Not only revenue, but the thing is, though, sovereignty. Taro is an excellent place to exercise sovereignty. Every one of these commissions, it's all about sovereignty and expanding off the team, so.
Okay, well, thank you. At this, let's see, it is ten thirty-five, let's take a five, ten minute break, and then we'll go into, go business, and we'll start the business, okay? Counsel, a special meeting back to order. We are moving down to item number nine, which is go business. And on item number one, review and approval of fingerprint contract, HR. I was asked to keep this table, and so by the Pawnee Nation Police Chief, David, he's not here, he's out on travel, and so with table, item number one, and so.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Let's call for the vote.
Darryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Amy Littleson? Yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Don Kair?
Yes.
Andrew Butterhorse chief?
Yes.
Deanna Keener?
Yes.
All right, that's approved, so it's tabled. We move to item number two, the presentation of Pawnee Nation twenty seventeen comprehensive budget.
Okay, Counsel, I'm happy to announce that we completed all of the review of the twenty seventeen comprehensive budget. We started, it's probably me, we started in, I moved my mic closer. We started in June, budget call was issued, I believe, in late March or first of April. We started, we started in June, reviewing the budgets, and met weekly since June, except for around Halloween, I think we skipped a week. But the staff, Muriel is excellent. Harrison is excellent in providing the information in the meetings. Mr. Kirk joined us this, you know, since he's been on board. Andrew's been in and out, you know, handling and trying to do it all.
For me.
And, oh, and Laura May, as well, we've got an excellent team. Laura May provides the grants and contracts information. Harrison provides the financial information, and Muriel is amazing. Whiz in the Excel spreadsheets and keeping up to date as we move forward, and I just appreciate her diligence in preparing all these spreadsheets. It takes a load off of Finance, you know, not to have to prepare those, and she's familiar with it, and she's just done a good job these past two years that I've worked with her. So I give the staff kudos for assisting in this process and moving forward. What I have before you today is the spreadsheets that provides a breakdown. At the next council meeting, I will be providing the total comprehensive budget, all of the budgets with this information on top to identify the expenditures by agency, as well as the revenue and the shortfall. It's the second spreadsheet. And please, please note with the caveat that this is subject to change to the final approval of the twenty seventeen comprehensive budget at the next council meeting. This is just our presentation to the council to show you where we're at, and then at the next council meeting, you'll approve the total twenty seventeen comprehensive budget as a whole. So I'm just gonna walk you through this, and if you have any questions, please stop me then. If you look at the first spreadsheet, it's titled Pawnee Nation twenty seventeen budget comparison to twenty sixteen budgets. The Department of Interior is first, it lists all of the DOI programs, VIA, tribal court, law enforcement, four seven seven, tribal historic preservation office, MAGC, consultation grant, Indian child welfare, and aid to tribal government. The total amount funded in twenty sixteen is one point three seven million, and compared to the twenty seventeen is one point four. These are all federal dollars. So the increase, it shows that we've received an increase of a hundred and two thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars on the DOI side. On the Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, IHS, health education, community health representative, housekeeping and grounds maintenance contract, the special diabetes program, and the substance abuse contract. The total twenty sixteen budget was nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen, and we have a twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollar increase compared to the twenty seventeen budget of nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, four sixty-nine. Then we have our other DHHS programs, which is our community service block grant, LIHE, Title VI Part A and C, the NSIP, which is the food supplement budget, child welfare services, promoting safe and stable families, childcare development fund mandatory, and childcare development fund discretionary, as well as the Pawnee Pride program. There was a decrease in funding compared to the twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen budget in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. And if you look on the right-hand column, it shows the percentages of each, kind of give you an idea. Then we have the Department of Education, is the Pawnee Nation College. The DOE is a grant that's funded by the, is a grant through the Department of Education to the Pawnee Nation College, and we are the fiscal agent for that grant. And there was an increase of twenty-four thousand, six oh four from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. We have the Department of Transportation, which includes Indian reservation roads and the safe routes to school. There was a decrease of one point zero four one million. Let me, let me explain that. It's, it's not a decrease, but it's a way of how we, we are implementing of doing the budgets. They have, the Department of Transportation has a base funded amount of the eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one oh three. That is what we're guaranteed to get in base funding. They have been including all of their dollars, but at the onset, and that's not a good management tool, because then we get into the potential of, oh, well, I've got all this money, I need to start spending, but in reality, they only have eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And we've had that issue in one of the other programs. So to alleviate that problem, we want them to just budget their base funding going forward. And when they get those new award amounts, then they come back and do a budget mon. That's the way, the practical way of budget monitoring and how it should proceed. So it's really not an overall decrease, they will get that money, but as far as the base funding, that's what we only want to budget. Environmental Protection Agency, which is the general assistance, or the GAAP, the water pollution control, and the non-point source program. They received overall a twenty-one thousand, seventy-two dollar increase compared to the twenty sixteen. Then we have the Department of Justice, which includes the violence against women. They are in their final year, but they're in an extension. So the amount of money that they have left according to that extension for this last final year is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so it shows a decrease of two hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. But it's just because they're in their third, their third and final year of that grant program. My understanding that they will be applying for additional DOJ funds to continue that program in the next C task cycle. C task, coordinated tribal assistance, solicitation through Department of Justice. We have the Department of Labor, which is. We have the Department of Labor, which is the, contains the EEOC dollars, which is just the, uh, $26,000, which basically covers salary. And there was no change. It's 26,000 each year. Then we have the IMLS, which is the Library Services Grant. And we did not receive this. And that's, that's a grant that's usually received through the college. So, uh, they did not receive funding this year. Then we have the United States Department of Agriculture, which is our food distribution program. And their money is set at 207,667. So there is no increase. The federal funding subtotal for, um, 2017 budget is five, five million, 240,818, which shows a 1.159 million dollar decrease. But keep in mind, uh, that one million of that is the transportation. Moving on to indirect cost. Indirect cost, uh, budget includes the Executive Office, the Pawnee Business Council, uh, fifty percent, at fifty percent, the Human Resources, the Finance Division, the Proprietary Department, IT Department, Planning Division, Property Management and Administrative Affairs Division. There was a 250,000 dollar, or 250,245 dollar increase from the 2016 to the 2017 budget. The end, the total indirect cost budget for 2017 is 2.141 million dollars. Then we have, we go on to the general fund. General Fund, uh, provides funding for the museum. The other portion of the Pawnee Business Council, which is fifty percent of their stipends as well as, um, all of their operating expenses. The Chiefs Council, the Election Commission, the Property Management Communications Department, the Food Distribution Palette Fund, the Liquor Control Board, the Higher Ed Scholarship Program, the Pawnee Tribal Court, the Tax, the Tax Program, the Gaming Commission, the Gaming Surveillance, Tarot, the Elderly Handicap and Emergency, Emergency Assistance Program, the Pawnee Nation College, the Hoopasa, Fire and Rescue, Burial Assistance, Environmental Regulatory Commission, DNRS, which is the Division of Natural Resources, the Non-Federal Activities, the Emergency Management Program, the Food Distribution, uh, Match, Tribal Match, the Title VI Tribal Budget, the Attorney General's Budget, the Division of Health and Community Services, uh, Budget, the Housekeeping, the Transportation and Safety, the Fitness Center, the Title VI Mail Donation, and the Cultural Resources Depot, um, the Sports Commission. That total budget from, um, 2016 to the 2017 decreased. We were able to decrease the tribal operating budget by 176,505. So last year it was 5.042 million. This year it's 4.866 million dollars. So the total tribal budget from last year to the 2017 budget this year, um, there was a total decrease of 1.085 million dollars, which is an amazing feat. And so we worked very hard to try to meet the needs and to reduce the shortfall compared to last year. If you recall, last year we had a $600,000 shortfall. Um, and so this helps bring that way down. My goal, my goal to the, uh, Budget Committee was to try to bring the short, shortfall at least to about 400,000, maybe 450,000, 450,000. But we did an even, a better job than that. And I'll, so any questions on this spreadsheet?
I just, I don't have anybody else. I just wanna say, what an awesome job. And you, uh, your Budget Committee, Finance Department, uh, I know you worked a lot of hours. You did a great job. I can't say that enough.
Thank you.
I agree. I appreciate it from everyone. I was wondering if there's a way we could give those three some type of bonus. Laura May, Harrison and Muriel, for all that hard work because you know they put in extra hours. So if we can consider some way.
And Andrew, I am too. It's right in their job. Well, they're gonna do it this year and get us, get us balanced out.
I'll take, I'll take care of it.
Okay, okay. I also wanted to ask, um, the general funds.
Yes.
The elderly handicap and emergency assistance. Is that going to be opened up to all elders or is it still based on income?
As it stands, it's still based on income. Um, if the council wanted to change that, that's certainly their prerogative, um, to coordinate with the program and Andrew to see what their thoughts, get their input and see if that's doable, um, or not.
And there have been a lot of questions and comments on that because it's only limited to particular elders. We'd appreciate that. That's all. Thank you. Angela, I have one question.
Yes.
Under the, um, general funds, the scholarship program was reduced by $35,000. That's captured somewhere else?
Well, they, I believe they got it in, they finally got all their funding in the, um, 477 program. And that's, we're anticipating that, that's all they're gonna need.
That's all. Oh, great. Okay, thank you. Outstanding. Appreciate it. The next spreadsheet is, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. So this was, uh, actually a question that on the same line I didn't have, we had to ask. And, um, and so I would go ahead and, um, get with, with Andrew on it. It's something that may need to come back to council is that, is the emergency assistance for elders and looking if we could waive the income at a certain level. Because last year when it was presented to us, I, I had said that when it comes back this year, I'd like to see it lower in at least five years. So if we could look at that, lower in that level and, um, that.
And do you know, um, expenditures for the year? Did have, are we done or are we looking, are we pretty much on target for spending and all?
Yes.
Or actuals?
Yes, actuals. Yes, we have, when we look at the, when we look at the budgets, we look at their R and E. We look at their last year's expenditure pattern and sometimes the prior year expenditures to see whether, if they submitted an increase, whether it's justifiable or whether it's not. And we ask them those hard questions. They have to literally justify those increases or decreases. And so, you know, we look at their spending patterns. This is one other, and it has to do with the elders and it's the birthday money. Um, some of them have expressed to me that they don't think they're gonna make it to 85. And they would really like for us to lower it if we were like to 80, you know, that they could be able to see that. So. We can consider that. I mean, that's, um, it's, it's, if the council, this is why I'm presenting it now. So if you all want us to change that, um, then we need, we need that direction from you all. Because we can definitely, certainly make those changes before presenting the final to you next time. Good. That's great. Thank you.
So can we get the policy and maybe add it to the agenda for our next meeting so we can review? Is that possible?
And that's all it's gonna take is a policy change because this is, this budget does not start until January 1st.
Right. We have lots of time.
Yes, yes.
So it doesn't have to be next week, but let's keep it in our radar. You can get it done maybe by the end of October.
It won't change the dollar amount. It'll just change the year.
Right. Uh-huh, just the, the way it's written. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on that first sheet?
No. Okay. The next, we'll go to the next, um, spreadsheet. It's called the Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma General Fund Tribal and Indirect Consolidated Budget. Now, this just, um, pertains to the indirect cost funds and the general fund. So I'm just gonna go, go down. Uh, the first set of information is all of the revenue. The total revenue, projected revenue for, uh, 2017 on tribal dollars is 4.9 million, 4.946 million dollars. Um, the total projected revenue for indirect cost revenue is 1.714 million dollars for a combination total of 6.660 million dollars, um, for a total revenue amount. We'll vote, uh, indirect costs, as everybody understands where indirect cost fund comes from. It comes from the indirect cost rate that's charged to the federal programs. Those are federal dollars that go into the indirect cost pool to fund the HR, IT, Executive Office, a portion of Executive Office, a portion of our stipends, uh, finance, important one. Those, those operating budgets. The next set of numbers where it talks about property management budget. The property management budget, she has it broken down by salary, by line item. And it gives you, this, this is a cumulative total of the Pawnee Business Council's budget based on the General Ledger Code, um, the Chiefs Council's budget, as well as the property management budget. So those three budgets are combined in all these line items. So you get a subtotal of salaries. You'll get a subtotal of tribal expenses, um, for those three budgets. Then the administrative expenses for those three budgets, and then on down through each of the categories. For overall amount of, uh, 1.14, 1.143 million dollars. Um, and I, for the people in the audience, I plan to put this into, in the tribal newsletter so that you all will have copies of it. So the total amount, uh, will be 1.235,959 dollars for the tribal expenses. And then on the indirect, indirect cost side, there is a total of 2.141,996 of expenditures. The next line says tribal funds, excess revenue over expenditures. That amount is what we have left from the revenue on the tribal side minus all of the expenses is 3.7 million dollars. But then you go to the indirect cost side and the revenue projected is 1.714 million, but the expenditures total 2.141 million, which brings us a shortfall of 427,949 dollars on the indirect cost side. So when you take those expenditures and you have the excess revenue of 3.7, that brings the shortfall just of those two budgets, uh, of those three budgets and the indirect cost budget at 3.282, excess revenue over expenditures. Now, the next set of numbers is all of the tribal appropriations. This is all of the rest of the general fund budgets that's listed on this page under general fund. And that total general fund budget is, uh, 4.869,545 dollar, um, 400, 4 million, 869,545 dollars. So you take that minus, um, the, all of the expenditures from the above, which gives you, um, 77,251 dollars excess revenue over expenditures for the tribal side. Then you look at the indirect costs. If you will recall, I said there was a 427,000 dollar shortfall. And that, so that shortfall comes down. So the overall bottom line for the 2017 budget shortfall is approximately 350,698, which is a huge amount compared to last year's shortfall. Now, if you, please, please keep in mind that last year there was a 347,000 dollar carryover. So if we operate along those same lines, we don't get hit with the emergency management thing, this is highly manageable. The 600,000 was manageable. This is definitely manageable. So we hope going into 2018 that we can have a balanced budget is our goal. So I'm trying to reduce that shortfall each year. And I think we did an excellent job this year in doing so. And, um, I'm just very pleased, very pleased.
All right. A lot of, a lot of numbers, a lot of figures and a lot of work. And, um, in my seat, I, I highly commend everyone who's been on the committee and all the work they've done. They've done a lot of work, a lot of hours, a lot of looking at figures and things. Just an excellent, um, job and thing. So, um, appreciate all, everyone, everyone for that. So, any other questions? All right. That's all the flyer. Okay, let's move on to business. Item number three, discussion and or approval of the Cultural Resource Committee.
Is this just later from last year? I mean, that's, yeah, we just need to formalize, um, whether, um, we need to formalize omitting those three or deleting those three, um, committees to, to create one committee. Um, that was done without, my understanding wishes that you appoint the committees. The body creates the committees and you appoint to them. Um, at, at the last meeting, I know you weren't here, um, we were informed that, that those three committees were, um, omitted into one committee, correct? And so that's, we just need to normalize, um, deleting those three committees and creating the one.
Okay.
As a.
And so that would, is that the new business item, number one?
Yeah, where you will point.
Okay.
Right here, you're just establishing this committee.
Okay. So what do we need?
Make a motion to establish a committee.
Okay.
And if you remove the other, it's, it's. Consolidate.
Did letters go out to those committees?
Yes.
I didn't get one. I was on one of those committees.
I sent you a letter down for enrollment because we didn't have that. Um, I think you had moved, but it was in her current address. She was supposed to get ahold of you and report the address and get a motion. Here.
She had emailed me about an address.
Yeah, they were.
But I haven't received it.
I'll ask her right back. We still have. But the address was with that.
Okay, what we need is a, um, motion to approve the, uh, new committee for the Cultural Resource Committee.
I'll make a motion to dissolve the, uh, three committees and consolidate them into one committee. Our Cultural Resource Division Committee.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. Any more discussion? Call for the vote.
Could you name those committees you want to dissolve?
What's that?
Name the committees you want to dissolve.
Uh, Language Committee, the Culture Committee and the Recreation Committee.
You're not gonna look anything up for this question?
Yeah, I said.
I just wanna make a remark that, um, I'm not about dissolving any committees. And I had asked for a letter to go out to, um, smooth things over because, um, I don't think people wanna be on committees that they're not committed to, to that cause or that purpose. And so, um, I'm totally against it because I've seen. But I'm just wanting to voice that, just from myself, that, that I don't agree with that dissolving. That's why you should have terms where the dates end, and then all like that, and, and something. For myself, because I sit on the council, I understood what's going on, but for other people who are on these committees, and, and if it wasn't explained, then, you know, they're just thinking they're being taken off the committee. So I just wanted to make that known, as part of discussion on this motion to dissolve committees. Okay. Daryl Locken.
Yes.
Amy Littleson, Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna here.
Yes.
Okay. That's approval of the cultural resource committee, which one. Move on to item number four, approval of donation request from tribal member GW. And this, this is in response to a vote of the last council meeting, and, and not having a second understanding. And so GW has been taken care of, and what this is, is just formalizing and authorizing the reimbursement to those who provided the monies for this tribal member. And so that's what this is, is about. So we need a motion and a second to approve this. Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second? All right.
Clarification. So this is basically, we already, the vote was taken the last time, so it's basically approving the reimbursement and the process.
I do have. I wonder if there's, is that what it's for?
Those are the receipts from many orders around council.
Oh, dinner, dinner, Thompson and Mr. Frenchy. That was just showing that, that's the documentation for the orders. They paid at the coffins. I thought you could count the two copies. Yeah, because this is, yeah, one, one page panelism, and the other page should be.
Call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna here.
Yes.
All right. The, the request and reimbursement is approved on old business item number four. We will move to new business. Item number one is the President's Presidential Committee Appointments. And we have two committees that we are looking at. The one is the Cultural Resource Committee. Y'all have in your package? I'm, I'm looking at the art copy. Cultural Resource.
Is it in the email?
Is that just an email?
Yeah.
Is it in the package?
No.
Oh, it's in there.
It is?
Very beginning, under, under old business.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And at the very bottom.
What page is that?
Twenty-nine.
Is twenty-nine in the computer?
Yeah. Twenty-nine.
So you want the motion, then open up for discussion?
Yes, need a motion.
I'll make the motion. Approved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Time for discussion. Approval of the committee for these ten individuals for the cultural resource.
You disappoint me.
Huh?
You disappoint me.
Oh, I disappoint them.
It's not a question.
So we don't need a motion?
I'll go back.
Okay.
I'll go back.
Well, okay. But let's go ahead and open up for discussion on Presidential Committee Appointments.
You can take a vote, you just don't, for the, for the overall, like you don't need a motion for, that's only for admissions board.
Okay. Taking a vote on what?
I mean, if you, if you want it, and you don't.
Okay, well, what we'll do is open up for discussion.
Well, I would like you to at least read out, since we're being recorded, who you're appointing to.
Okay, the ten, there are ten men from, for the Pawnee Nation Cultural Resource Division. They are Marshall Gilbert, William How, Matt Reed, Warren Pratt Jr., and Adrian Spotted Horse Chief, Larry Goodfoss, Walter Echophoff, Ralph Hayman Jr., Frank Adson, and Stephen Moore. Okay, discussion. Donna.
We had discussion on this in the last council meeting, and, you know, it's a, it's a new division, and we have a new division director, and we're in a unique position, you know, to have the background that our division director has. And we want to let him grow and develop his committee, and, you know, really focus on culture, you know, with Pawnee Nation. My concern is, I don't want to lose the voice of our elder women. I would like to have a way that some of our elder, and this was after, you know, after the appointment was made, I don't think all of us were kind of aware of what was going on. And I had, I started being contacted by women and wanting to know why, and so I started, you know, engaging in conversation. And, and some of the women had said, well, you know, we are the keeper of the bundles. We have a, you know, we bring, and, and most of these women I talked to were in their eighties. The first little woman that approached me was a young woman, but, so in talking with these lady, these elder women, they, they have expressed that they would like to have a voice in the cultural committee, and, and they would like to have some membership on it. And the concern there goes that, that part of it goes against what the establishment of the committee. So I, I needed to bring that forward for discussion and consideration.
I too echo those concerns as well. And I guess, I, I too agree that women have a huge role culturally and, and throughout history in regard to what all they did. You know, we worked, we, we did all, we did all the gardening, we worked the fields, and men would go out and hunt, and we'd come back and take care of everything. And, but I do respect, you know, Herb's recommendation coming from his, his background and as a division director as well. But I did want to voice that concern for our women constituents and our elders, and even our young folks. You know, we have, I think, as a woman myself, I have a lot to add, I have a lot to bring to the table, and I just don't want to hinder that, or any of that, from a woman's perspective, I guess, if you will. But I, I hope that your meetings are open, so that the community can come and participate that way, if, if we keep it as it is. So I think that's all I'm going to say.
I agree with him. And in the letter, it says, decision to go Pawnee men only on this first Cultural Resource Division Committee, is that as part of our culture, traditions, and history. My concern, and I've visited with other tribal members about the culture, traditions, and history, and things have changed with that. I know, listening to my grandparents through the years, that a lot of things have changed with the culture and traditions based on the new modern day. So I'm thinking that this deal with the women should be considered in that too, when we're, when it's discussed about eventually making changes to the culture and traditions, because I just want to remind you that that has been brought up several times in some of the small changes that have been administered. That's all.
I have a comment as a woman. Having been raised in the same home as Herb, and having that cultural awareness, and I, I can't think of anybody, and even though he's my brother, I'm going to say it, I can't think of anybody more prepared, more, more earned than to have him having that seat. And that's how it used to be, and I think he's, he's, that's the whole, one of the whole things is, is that because everything is changing and evolving and stuff, is to try to maintain it a little bit, try to keep things as they were. I don't have a problem with it myself. I, 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 that's the way I was raised, you know, so it was men. And it's just been very recent, even with even our Pawnee veterans, that they've had women involved, it was just always the men. Even though we've had women all along that, that served and wore the uniforms as well, it's really been the men. And so I don't have a problem with it, and if, if there's a woman that, you know, is considered for the next time, women, so be it. But for now, I'm with it. That's all I have. Thank you.
You know, you know, I have been to all of our cultural events here and there, and women have a lot of knowledge, but they don't speak publicly about it. It's always their, a male relative speaking their behalf. And I feel that this is, in a way, this is carrying it on for a man, ten men here, gets a voice. But we also know that they're going to be open. Two comments from the women, so in a way, it's still that way. The women, they have not much knowledge, but it's just our, our way of doing things is they do not speak publicly. The men, a male member of the family speaks for them, and that's all I've got to say.
All right, well, thank you for those comments. And in speaking with Herb.
President Bruce.
Yes.
Explain what Jill are talking about, what kind of committee, what all of it entails.
The committee is the Pawnee Nation Cultural Resource Committee. And what it is, is they are combining three committees, the repatriation, the cultural committee, and the language committee into one. And Herb is our division director, and he is starting out with ten men with this first committee, with the caveat that later on, as the men go off, that women will be appointed, you know, if, if they're there and, and things. But he has recommended those ten that I spoke of to start this first committee. And so in, in speaking with Herb, when he approached this, approached me with this, I, I voiced the same concerns that you all had, but, but he explained it to me like he explained it to you, to you all at the last council meeting. It's sounded, and I think it's a good way. We can start it that way. And so I, I agree to support him in this, him as a division director. There's a lot of newness that is, is coming together, a lot of, lot of bringing everything together into one, and, and being more comprehensive in, in, in having everything, rather than all these different committees and doing these different things, and we're just combining it to one. And we'll see how it goes. And like I said, this is a new, new division director, and, you know, these are the ideas that, that he has presented. And so I appreciate the comment, and I, I've had discussion with different ones, and they have given their, their viewpoint on this and things, and I respect all of them. I respect our women. Our, our women have a strong role in, in our tribe, in our tribe. And so at this, at this time, I appoint these ten men to the cultural committee. So thank you. So at this time, we will move to item number two.
Thank you.
Arthur? Yes. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. We're still on item number one. I thought you. And this is the agreements committee. You have the email this morning that was sent to you all. Do you all get it? You sent it to me? You sent it to all of us? Okay. I thought you had it. Once again, I blame that on the coffee. Lack of coffee, so I just sent it to you all. And so what we're doing is appoint these three.
We, we have a, we have agreements that's come through, but we have basis on the agreements committee.
The committee is the Pawnee Nation Cultural Resource Committee. And what it is, is they are combining three committees, the repatriation, the cultural committee, and the language committee into one. And Herb is our division director. And he is starting out with ten men with this first committee. With the caveat that later on, as the men go off, that women will be appointed, you know, if they're there and things. But he has recommended those ten that I spoke of to start this first committee. And so in speaking with Herb, when he approached this, approached me with this, I voiced the same concerns that you all have. But he explained it to me like he explained it to you all at the last council meeting. It's sounded and I think it's a good way. We could start it that way. And so I agree to support him in this, him as a division director. There's a lot of newness that is coming together, a lot of, lot of bringing everything together into one and being more comprehensive in having everything rather than all these different committees and doing these different things. So we're just combining it to one. And we'll see how it goes. And like I said, this is a new, new division director and, you know, these are the ideas that he has presented. And so I appreciate the comment and I've had discussion with different ones. And they have given their viewpoint on this and things. And I respect all of them. I respect our women. Our women have a strong role in our tribe, in our tribe. And so at this, at this time, I appoint these ten men to the cultural committee. So thank you. So at this time, we will move to item number two.
Thank you.
Arthur? Yes. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. We're still on item number one. How'd you? Natalie? And this is the agreements committee. You have the email this morning that was sent to you all. The other. Did you all get it? You sent it to me? You said it's all right? Okay. I thought you had it. Once again, I blame that on the coffee. Lack of coffee. So I just sent it to you all. And so what we're doing is appointing these three?
We have a, we have agreements that's come through, but we need to have pay receipts on the agreements committee. These are temporary appointments. Now, one of them is Mr. Tophie. He wants to be, he sent a letter of interest in permanently placing his position, but we'll have to wait until next business council to do that. So this is just temporary appointments for this agreement. We have agreements coming through. We don't have the positions filled, so we have temporary, temporary appointments to satisfy this agreement.
This one agreement?
This one agreement.
Okay.
And that's it.
So right now, we don't have, we don't have any agreements?
We have one.
And who's that?
Amber. Thank you. Amber's the only permanent.
Okay.
Okay. So this is for the temporary appointments of these three to look at one agreement. Okay?
Again, it does not require our vote, right? Do you, as president, appoint?
Yes. So this, this, okay. All right. Thank you, Cindy. So just give it, pass it that on to me. Okay. Okay. All right. Once again, I blame it on the coffee. So the three temporarily is Arthur, Tophie, Chris McCray, and Amber Berger to look at this. So I appoint these three temporarily for this one agreement. And talking to the camera there, we need people to apply for the, we do. I know, we do. We need, we need our folks to apply for agreements committee. So that would be great. So-
I have a question.
Yes.
On agreements, is it only employees?
Yes, it's only employees.
Okay. It's only employees?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to item number two. So I did what I was supposed to send you? Okay. Item number two is approval of resolution sixteen seventy-three NCAI membership induced.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second in the discussion. Call for a vote.
Harold?
Yes.
Baby Wilson, yes. Angela Costa?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatter, who's chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
All right. That passes. Moving on to item number three, approval of resolution sixteen seventy-four, revised MOU with Amerin, Amerin for the housing authority.
I'll talk about this a little bit. This is, this is, we have, this is homeowner's insurance for our housing. The way it's worked in the past has been that, well, it's complicated because it's circular. So the homeowner had to go to our housing authority, had to request the form, then they would sign a check to the housing authority. Then the housing authority would have to submit the request to this insurance company. And then the housing authority would have to cut a check to the insurance companies to pay for the insurance. What we're asking here is there's a new MOU that we're signing with them that the homeowners themselves can go directly to Amerin. And they can just write a check to Amerin for the insurance they want. So this applies to the federal housing and the non-federal housing as well. So it cuts out the housing authority from, from basically controlling that, that process there. And the housing authority will be responsible for making all these insurance applications available to all of the homeowners that they, they go out for. The homeowners themselves can go straight to the insurance companies and just write a check, get the coverage that they want, and they don't have to go through our housing authority. So it's a way of reducing the administrative cost. Yes, ma'am?
Is this the housing insurance for individual homeowners who own houses that are tribal members?
This is, this is housing insurance for all of our housing authority program houses, whether they're Nahasa or non-Nahasa. This is like renters' insurance. This is like homeowners' insurance. This is what-
Why would they be paying homeowners' insurance if the recipient is buying their own home?
Do what?
Why would they be paying for insurance for a participant who is buying their own home?
Well, that was, let me rephrase that. They didn't, they didn't have to pay that for homeowners that would buy their own home. The homeowners themselves would go out and get their own insurance. But Amerin Indian has breaks through the Pawnee Housing Authorities provide certain low rates to people that take advantage of our housing authority. So they could go through our housing authority, take advantage of those low rates.
But they would pay, and they would pay themselves? Let me, let me, let me tell you why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Back in 2010, there was a resolution that was passed by, that I read in the Chautixtaw Chautixtaw that said that the housing authority would be paying, would be, had a program that homeowners, no matter where they live, they would pay their home insurance. And so I called about that and they said it was not up and running yet. So I didn't know if this had to do with that from way back in 2010 when that was passed or if that program ever was established from that resolution.
From my understanding, this is separate from that. This is a program to, because we have people in our Nahasa and non-Nahas homes that are renting or leasing or whatever, the nation, that are underserved in the insurance community. And so Amerin came in and made the MOU with the housing authority saying, "We'll provide insurance for you guys, but we'll provide coverage for these folks." The problem's been though, that it's been controlled by the housing authority and they control the funds and all that stuff. And so now it's taking the housing authority out of the insurance game. The homeowners themselves, not homeowners. The people who own the, or rent the, lease the homes can go out and get that, that insurance company to pay for their property. And it gets straight to Amerin. Now, as far as like homeowners as well, homeowners are under served insurance-wise within our jurisdiction as well. So our homeowners have access to discounted rate through Amerin to deal with them. But again, they've kind of always done that on their own, I think, but-
And then, and the homeowners, not women, is that right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
It's Indian homeowners.
I-
Or, correction.
I have a question. I'm mixed up. I thought that we didn't have any kind of, anything to say about the housing, that that's a state run program and all that kind of stuff. Is that true?
I say no. I say no.
Well, is that true?
The housing authority is a state, it is a state chartered entity, but it's chartered by the Pawnee Nation.
So who's, so who's the boss?
I wouldn't, my personal opinion is that I think Pawnee Nation is still in the driver's seat, even though it's a state chartered entity.
There's been other tribal governments that's taken over as their housing authority because of, you know, specific reasons. Whatever they are, they, and they stepped in the place of the ward.
I'd really like to see that happen.
That's why I say that.
Talking about that. We need to have it here. If we don't, that's why it's confusing. That needs to be discussed. At the meeting we had, cancelled yesterday. But this is, I just need to clarify that so I can make a good decision here.
In my opinion, for what it's worth, is what, when the house, the first issue, the housing authority category came up the first time, I began to deal with Taro. My recommendation is let's not start calling on that thread at that time because it is, the way I can put it is, I can argue that housing authorities completely have problems. And I can be right. And you could argue that Pawnee Business Council had housing authorities or housing. And you can be right.
Right.
And-
I'm looking at us as being autonomous and you're asking me to approve a resolution. That's my rub.
Yeah.
That's my rub.
And that's what I was looking at, the MOU. It says Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma. It doesn't say Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma. And Bruce is signing off on it.
Yeah. And because here's the, here's the thing. Like, when you mentioned, Trager Thompson, that other tribes are taking over their housing, they have. But they've only been able to do that because the state of Oklahoma said they could do that in legislation passed in 2012. That stated if tribes want to, want to take over their housing authorities that were once, that were state agencies, they can. All they have to do is pass a resolution to do it. So that, that's another thing that tells me that it's too intertwined. Like, I can't give, I can't give the council with a hundred percent and say, "Yeah, do it. This is the way to go" because it just isn't, you know.
It's not that kind of drive.
Yes.
So this is a memorandum of agreement with Amerin and Pawnee Nation dealing with any tribal member who would like a policy for insurance, home insurance through Amerin?
Yes.
And, and the rate would be a discount compared to if you went directly to Amerin?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have what the, what the benefits are from going through Amerin? Do they have a good home policy?
You know, I, I haven't seen their policy. But I would say this, that, you know, part of the reason, and this is my, I'm thinking about this logic. Part of the reason why it has something to do with the Pawnee Nation is because Amerin is a private corporation and the housing authority is a state agency. So how do you, how do you get the benefit of cutting those rates and doing day-to-day exemptions if you're not coming to the housing authority?
That's the difference is going through Pawnee Nation rather than going through Amerin. And you get the discount.
The thing here is that we are trying to encourage our tribal citizens to get involved in the insurance scheme. But they have renters' insurance, like me. If my, if my house goes down, I mean, yeah, the nation's covered because they probably have insurance on the house.
Just the house, yeah.
But my stuff, my things, all that stuff is not covered.
Well, like we, who own our home, we do not go through, we have a different insurance agent and it's good.
Yeah.
But we're paying plenty. So that's why I was curious. How would you contact to be, to look into getting a policy through Amerin after we do the MOU?
From what I was told by the housing authority is that you can go through the housing authority, but they will be, they will hand out information. It's that they're no longer controlling the funds that come between the Indian homeowner, renter, loser, and the insurance company. They're not holding on to them. They're not doing anything. It's just, they're going to be the provider of information. And the homeowner will be with Amerin directly. Because of the previous agreement, the homeowners couldn't contact Amerin. They had to go through the housing authority, which is-
And they had to pay the housing and not the pay directly to Amerin. And that's the difference.
Correct.
And that's what this is about.
Yes.
Okay. And so the way I read the MOU, it is to tribal members residing within the exterior boundaries of its reservation. It says Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma desires to improve access to affordable property and casualty insurance. So that, to me, I read that to say that if I owned a home within the exterior boundaries of, within the exterior boundaries of the reservation, that I could go through that program and purchase my home insurance at an affordable, a less, a better affordable rate.
But we have to, you know, again, it is because the agreement that they have with the housing authority-
The MOU, right. Okay. So, so that is, I can see.
It's a very sort of the community to get them more involved in, in insurance. It's, it takes benefit, yes, it's a benefit.
After all that, I will-
I'm tired.
I will make a motion to approve this resolution for the Amerin Risk Management Corporation memorandum of interest.
One second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Harold?
Yes.
Baby Wilson, yes. Angela Costa?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatter, who's chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
Okay. So that resolution sixteen seventy-four passes. So we will move on to item four, discussion and/or action on Pawnee Nation Supreme Court Justice and prosecutors' decision.
I had asked this at the last council meeting with the status of several letters that I had received and emailed. And this was one of them. And I didn't know if there had been an official response related to Mr. Chief Justice Buchanan in regard to his recommendation. I guess I have some concerns. One, we have a lawsuit before the Supreme Court that they're going to be hearing in November, I believe. But my take on dealing with the attorneys that I've worked with is that any attorney worth their salt should be able to come in, read the briefs, read the case history, and formulate an objective opinion and to, to be able to make a decision on that case. He's requesting that we hold off on his, on an appointment or retain him until after this lawsuit is heard due to, they're going to do it at the Tulsa College of Law, big old to-do thing, I guess. I don't know, you know, I don't know where, what that plays into it. But, you know, I have concerns that I've expressed to this council from the meeting I had with Chief Justice Buchanan. And I was not, I was very disappointed in how he presented himself to the business council that was there, that were present. I felt that he looked down upon the tribal government with the comment that he has to deal with this every two years, every time a new administration comes in. And especially the tone of the letter that we received. You know, when we first sent out the request to move those accounts as the treasurer, and I believe I had that authority. And he questioned that authority and said that he would not respond, or he would not submit anything over without a court order and without even coming to us and sitting down trying to see where we stood and how we could make this work together to go forward. That has been resolved, but I just want to voice my concern in regard to how I feel in regard to that meeting that we had with him. And it wasn't very positive in my, in my view in regard to how he viewed the tribe. And he's been here since inception. And I, and I feel it's time for a change.
And what, continuing with her discussion about the treatment. I see in his letter that he met with Harrison and Andrew in February. Did you feel the same way? Did you feel like he was talking down to you?
No. I mean, I, I did, but we were there to, on the request of the council and the president, to report to these issues. So we went in there with that mindset. So it might, it just might have been a different, I don't know.
And you came out with a positive?
Yeah. We were able to, you know, get, get their statements, get their revenue statements and get their, the information that we needed as a nation for our financial side of things. And we've actually continued discussions with them, setting up trust funds for the NOBs and fines that we're doing. So I feel like we have a strong relationship with them.
Okay. Okay. And so everything, let's see, it says control funds from deposit to disbursement, satisfying record-keeping requirements. And all of that is all updated and everything? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, call? I was under, I misunderstood the email that was sent out. And so like I was opposed to an appointment because I thought that there were three positions that were open on that Supreme Court justices. So I thought we needed more response. And then- And in the letter, no, I was just talking to Cindy, and she's like, "No, we, there's only one position open." And I was like, "Oh," I thought there was three open. I guess because I just seen the three that came in, and so I was thinking that there's three. And I was like, "How come we don't have more than this?" So I know I was opposed to that though, because I thought there was three positions and we only got three applications.
Oh, you're talking about the last business council meeting, you guys said we don't have enough applicants, and that's why?
Well, yeah, and then there was the email sent out to us, you know, that needed to come up. But I really didn't appreciate the letter that was received from Bobby Cannon. And I was in that meeting, and man, he was awful. I mean, I was totally, I was shocked. I was probably sitting with my, I could not believe that our Supreme Court justice was talking to us like that and threatening us with the lawsuit.
Well, I would have.
I was just, I was shocked. I didn't appreciate the disrespect that was shown to us and then as a nation. That, it was terrible. And I was thankful that, you know, Lorme was there in that meeting, and she, you know, she calmed him down. But, you know, I was just, I was really upset about that. And I didn't understand where it was coming from. You know, it was just a little discussion. And we thought we were in good terms, you know, just sitting down, going to talk this out and, you know, figure out the direction we're going. And, you know, there to help answer questions. So, yeah, I was really shocked. But that was my understanding. I thought that we had three positions, and then it was just a blind call.
Okay. I would remind the council of naming names. If we name names when we go to executive session on anybody, this should be my thing of that. Well, here's where we're at, though. What we're trying to do is, if we are in agreement to, just to extend the appointment, correct, till October for the Supreme Court justice. And we have re-advertised, correct? I'll check, but we are going to re-advertize for the Supreme Court justice to get more applicants.
I was the one that sent the initial request out because I thought, two, there was three positions open, and we only received three applicants, and that we would have to go with those three. And I wanted more applicants.
Oh, okay.
So now knowing that there's only one position, I'm okay with interviewing three.
Yes. Let's go ahead and do that. So let's not do anything on this appointment, okay? So what we need to do is, since it's on the agenda... Oh, it's just discussion, okay? So we will not do anything on the Supreme Court justice position, and we will set up the interviews for council. But what we do need to do is on the prosecutor's position, correct?
Well, they're both open, and we have three applicants for both positions.
Okay, and so what we need to do is, are we in agreement to go ahead and set up interviews for both positions?
Yes.
Yes, so let's do that. So that's the discussion, and that's what we'll do.
And in the meantime, is this person going to be hanging on in the interim? Or we're just going to cut him loose?
Yeah, they're still there.
They're still there until we. Until we, okay. Okay. All right, so that's the discussion, no action on item number four. Item number five, budget committee recommendations, so I'll turn it over to Angela.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the Standing Bear Act for the 2017 Powell Booklet. Are those not in here? Oh, I'm sorry. The amount is $120. Budget Committee recommends approval.
Is it what you said?
$120 for a full-page ad.
I recommend, I make a motion that we approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I motion.
All right. Yes, call for the vote.
Darryl Lockhead?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottershe?
Yes.
Leanna Keen?
Yes.
That passes.
The next item is the approval, yes, approval of the Standing Bear tribal contribution in the amount of $500. I'm sorry. And a blanket, this part is up. Okay, yes. $500 cash donation and a Peloton blanket that they utilize for giveaway. Budget Committee recommends approval. $100 to be paid to the.
And they seem to be.
The American Church Chiefs. They have blankets, they're going to sell us, so we don't have to go in for this.
Okay.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Item number B passes, move on to item number C.
Next is the approval of the OEH IHS project, project number OK 16U41. It's a tribal contribution in the amount of $2,360 to the Office of Environmental Health through the IHS for sanitation facilities and construction projects. Budget Committee recommends approval, so I make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? That passes, we'll move on to item number D.
Item number D is the approval of the Pawnee Business Council Budget Mod Number Seven. In order to pay for the project, U16U41, we have to move money around within the council's budget. And we moved it from. Yes, we moved it from travel to matching expense. Created that line item in an amount of the $2,360, thank you. I'll make that motion. Second?
Motion is made and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Angela.
Angela, second.
First could we, because all the time I'm trying to write, so like, okay, Donna made the motion, Angela's made the second, so, you know.
All right, sorry, we'll slow it.
If you could, if you could just announce it when you're, yeah. Say you made the motion, you made the, maybe then we'll avoid what happened to us at last meeting.
Okay.
You know, if you could just repeat it.
So Sammy made the motion.
Sammy.
Yes. Angela made the second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? So that passes. We will move on to item number six, approval of Resolution 1675, support for Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. Okay, that's the one you should put on our desk.
Resolution and a letter.
Resolution and a letter. Yes. Okay, we're here. Pawnee Nation is a governing body of the Pawnee Nation. And this is where it is, and it goes on to say, "It is the cultural and essential nature of the Pawnee Nation to protect its irreplaceable natural resources while at the same time balancing the need of providing those resources to the modern world. And the Pawnee Nation recognizes that transporting these resources across the United States poses difficulties and challenges to the safety of our natural resources. And the Pawnee Nation recognizes that rivers, creeks, lakes, aquifers, and streams not only serve the local community and environment, it also provides drinking water for the surrounding and downstream communities. That must be remembered any time decisions affecting those waters are made. And the Pawnee Nation, having reviewed the material of the situation in the Standing Rock related to the Dakota Access Pipeline, believes that the federal government has failed in its obligations to the citizens of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe by not clearly identifying the impact of the proposed pipeline entering into proper government-to-government negotiations and failing to address the legitimate concerns raised by the Standing Rock Sioux. And whereas the needs of all tribes and their communities are equally as important as other communities and have been disregarded when identifying the pipeline route when the route is changed to mitigate environmental concerns regarding water resources to the city of Bismarck while not giving the same thoughts and concerns to the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe and community. And whereas the Pawnee Nation believes that meaningful government-to-government consultations that reflect the sovereignty of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe and protect its interests in protecting its community did not take place in the contradiction to the treaty obligations and trust responsibilities held by the federal government. And now, therefore be it resolved, the Pawnee Nation Business Council does hereby support the efforts of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe in opposing the issuance of permits, construction, and location of the Dakota Access Pipeline. Now, therefore be it further resolved, the Pawnee Business Council supports the efforts of all the citizens, tribal and non-tribal, to voice their opinions and protest against said failures by the federal government in keeping with the principles of the Pawnee Nation Constitution and the United States Constitution. Now, therefore be it finally resolved, the Pawnee Nation Business Council requests that the Secretary of the Interior, Sally Jewell, and the Assistant Secretary, Indian Affairs, Lawrence Roberts, take any and all necessary steps to protect the natural resources of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe while reaffirming its trust responsibilities and recognizing the sovereignty of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe to protect its resources from unnecessary harm caused by the transportation of oil and gas through its ancestral grounds. So this is the Resolution 1675 that we would like to pass today in support of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe and against their continued building of the pot.
Make that motion that we approve Resolution 1675?
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, but Adrian Spottershe seconded by Angela. Call for the vote.
Darryl Lockhead?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottershe?
Yes.
Leanna Keen?
Yes.
All right, good, that passes. And we also have a letter of support that all of the business council will be signing and put our name to that document to send to the Sioux Tribe.
I would like to suggest, I would like to suggest that this be sent to the chairman as soon as possible because my understanding is that he's going to the United Nations, and he wants all tribes' resolutions.
I wrote people letter, they have the information on there.
Yeah. So we'll send an email, but then we'll send the issue.
And this will also go to Secretary Jewell and the Assistant Secretary.
Yes, good. Good.
President Pratt?
Yes.
Well, one more, if we could just add a chart Facebook page, that would be great. If you'd like people to see that.
All right. We'll move on to number seven, approvals of Resolution 1676, revision section 101 to Veterans Tax Commission.
I hear they are having a meeting with the controls, so that's maybe a little while.
We can now present?
My understanding is it's just limiting the number of tags a veteran can have, correct?
It goes to two things. One is that we used to have the veterans category broken up into disabled category and all that stuff, and they got different rates. Well, the tax commission voted that they just want to have a money rate for veterans, and that they can tag two vehicles that they own. And before, it was just their own personal vehicle that they could tag. So now it's two vehicles, and the rate is the same across the board, so it doesn't matter whether you're 100% disabled or 40% disabled or not disabled. If you're a veteran, you get a veteran rate.
And what does that rate?
I don't know, it's off my head. It's.
Should be free.
I thought it was free.
Yeah, well, it is, I think it's free to some extent. I think it's like five or six bucks per administrative fee.
It's a very minimal fee, but the tag is free.
Oh, good. All right.
But limiting to two.
And it was just one?
It used to be, I think, just one. And so they, but disabled vets, depending on their percentage of disability, were allowed to tag more vehicles and all that. It was just all, it was all broken out into percentages, and now they just blanket all veterans. It's okay.
My understanding, this could be wrong, is I thought that there wasn't a limit on it. That's why they were looking to do two. But what you're saying is, so they can have two, at a very low price?
Yes.
No cost, except for admin fees. And then they pay for any other vehicles?
They, they.
Okay, I just want to make clarification on that.
Yes. And my understanding, that was my understanding, so I, we're different. But anyway, it's going to change into where it's like, if veteran falls the same. Is it tied with the same services as every other?
Okay. Good. But it's better. So. So looking for a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion too.
Motion is made by Donna.
I'll second.
Seconded by Lee Anna. Call for the vote.
Darryl Lockhead?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottershe?
Yes.
Leanna Keen?
Yes.
All right. Let me make this statement, going back to that support from the Standing Rock Sioux. It's been reported on Facebook that I'm supposed to be up there protesting. I've been asked about that. They got misunderstood, we got two of our chiefs going up there. So they're up there, so Bruce Pratt's not up there, but they are up there. So that's clarification on that. Okay. We go to item number eight, nine, 10, and 11, which will be the enrollment. And this carry will present.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The four resolutions that I have, these were all looked upon by the committee on August 11 and being invited to the council this past Saturday on August 11. The first one, Resolution 1677, is for 25 new applicants.
This is Resolution 1677?
Yes.
All right. Looking for a vote, I mean, a motion?
I make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 1677, new enrollment.
All right, Sammy makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Amy. Seconded by Amy. Call for the vote.
Carol Lockhead.
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking for the resolution and I don't see the, in, in here, can somebody tell me what page it's on?
Oh, we just added these. Is, is the package?
Oh, should be.
I see sixteen eighty, but I don't see...
Okay, thank you.
Send me answer.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Adrian Spottlehorst. Leanna Keaton.
All right, that resolution passes.
Resolution sixteen seventy-eight is to document the debate of the non-disease protocol of the river to remove on the annuity vote. And the time, I know we've had a couple others that passed away, but the timeline that needs went before Republican Committee and the Sharo, it was after the date.
Carrie, is this resolution sixteen seventy-eight?
Yes.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve resolution sixteen seventy-eight.
Sammy makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Adrian seconds. Call for the vote.
Carol Lockhead.
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Anderson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Adrian Spottlehorst.
Yes.
Leanna Keaton.
Yes.
All right, next one?
Sixteen seventy-nine resolution, this is a conditional remuneration, this tribe member terminated a conditional remuneration to, upon acceptance of being the ultimate reserve tribe.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Donna makes the motion and Angela makes the second. Call for the vote.
Carol Lockhead.
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Anderson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Adrian Spottlehorst.
Yes.
Leanna Keaton.
Yes. Okay, that resolution passes.
Resolution sixteen eighty is another conditional remuneration, this is a figure submitted of overrides and silently to become a member of the Minnesota Voice, one taken tribe.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion is made by Donna, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
Carol Lockhead.
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Anderson.
Yes.
Adrian Spottlehorst.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Leanna Keaton.
Yes.
Right, that resolution passes. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie.
All right, we're moving to item number twelve.
As I stated earlier, I attended the Indian, the Indian Trust Act Reform Act in Albuquerque twenty sixteen, and it was a tribal consultation meeting, and they are proposing a draft proposed rule for minimum qualifications in the appraisal services. That was one key thing is what they're trying to do is work with tribal governments to give them more sovereignty in doing their appraisals. So they would just do the established minimum qualifications, and as long as the tribe met those minimum qualifications and getting the appraisers to do the appraisals, then as long as they met that and they had the, they have to do, you know, administrative requirements, submitting the certification to make sure, certify that they meet those minimum standards. So they, they're wanting comment on the minimum qualifications to see if there's any additional requirements that the tribe wants to put in there to operate the appraisal services. The other thing is moving some of the services and functions out from OST. They provided some recommendations, whether they create a new undersecretary is what they're calling, calling it, and, or asking tribes for input for identifying the agency where to move it to, whether it's BIA, whether it's creating the undersecretary position or keeping it at OST. My recommendation is to ask Andrew, the AG, something else on it, is to look at that and draft some comments for us to look at. My recommendation as a council member from working with the Office of Special Trustee, not only just within my business and within other career jobs that I've had, is that we maintain the OST relationship. We main, we push for permanent, permanent funding for the Office of Special Trustee. They were created to handle the mismanagement of COVID, and they have had three years of clean audits, they have established databases for individual tribal members that have IIM accounts that can, it's twenty-four seven, can go online and get information. Their, their record for first time response on that call ending is ninety percent, and I think the, the average is like fifty, forty-five to fifty percent, so they're meeting, you know, the needs of those individual Indian account holders, and that affects a lot of our people. And OST has had three years of clean audits, or the past clean audits, and they have made just a tremendous turnaround in management of our trust assets for our individual people, or Indian people. And so my recommendation, and just from my experience and knowledge, is to maintain OST and all of their functions at OST, that they don't be diminished. And the other, the other second thing is, is that they have a proposed rule in there about, is the department liable on the minimum qualifications for appraisals, is the department liable if, if some, if, for those appraisers, whether they're approved, whether they approve them or not? And the other piece, major piece of that is that some of those appraiser, appraisals will not require secretary approval, and they're just transferring the function to the tribe to operate. But my thing, my big concern was they said that, that the department is not liable, and to me, that diminishes the trust responsibility. So that was one of my comments that I made to the OST that was present and the representative from the Assistant Secretary's office and the Director of BIA who was there as well, they had a panel, is that we ensure that that trust responsibility is maintained and is not diminished, and I told them I had an issue with them not being liable. Now, what did that, what does that entail? Does that mean if there's an issue with the appraisal and we, we meet those minimum qualifications and something happens to, we approve that lease based on that appraisal, I want to make sure that tort claims coverage is still intact? And I made the point that we, as a tribe, when we six thirty-eight those programs, we step, we feel we stepped into those federal, to the federal government's shoes to operate that program. So we should have everything afforded to that federal position that operates that program, whether it's the federal government providing it or the tribe side providing it. So, and the, the comments are due by nine thirty. I'll give you my book and you all can make copies, it's, it's real thin, they have the proposed rule in there. I tried to scan it in to send it, but it looks like there's only two pages that made it to you. Oh, and I apologize, it was this morning. So if you all can get that and get some comments back to us within, and within, by September thirty, by September thirty, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, are you all in consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good. Good report, Angela. So let's move on down to open forum.
You guys know I can't come over here without selling. I have something to say. Saturday to twenty-seventh, the elders are having a breakfast meal for sale. Saturday from eight to noon, we'll have a skillet bread, fried potatoes, ramen, egg, sausage gravy, fruit and drinks for seven dollars. Or if you buy your ticket for me today, I'll send it to you at six. Or if you want it delivered to your house, we'll have to charge you a dollar, but we will deliver. And the money is going to Elizabeth for our trip to Miami.
Are you throwing in some Gensu knives, too?
Can you repeat the, the time and day? Saturday, the twenty-seventh, from eight to ten.
Okay, from eight to ten, twenty-seventh. Okay, good.
Six dollars today.
Okay. Anything else, we're open forum.
Adrian, are you going to bring it?
Yeah. You know, we was talking, we just passed this resolution, and I just kind of thinking about how to really explain it, I guess. I'm assuming everybody here in the audience understands the importance of this contest that's going on up there in, in Standing Rock, does everybody know what, what's going on? You know, to me, this issue is, is way bigger than just the tribe itself, this is a huge issue, and it involves not only just Native Americans, but all races of people, including the environment, you know, about this water issue. We're talking about the Missouri River, it's a huge river, I don't know if you guys have ever actually seen it, but this river, we have stories about that in our culture, you know? A lot of strong, powerful stories about, about that. And this also feeds into the, to the loop, the Republican and, and these other river systems that, that we lived on, you know, so we have a strong connection to this, to this water, to this river. And this, to me, you know, this issue that's, that's taking place up here, you know, it's, how I'm trying to say is that it's, it's bigger than just them, us right now, that this affects children that aren't even here yet. You know, I, I've been, I've been reading a lot of things on, on the internet, on, on Facebook, on, you know, just different, just kind of just reading about stuff, and, and there's proven, there's proven facts that these, these pipelines fail. There's videos of, of rivers that are on fire from, from where the pressure of the water, of things rise and flood and all these different things where they have leaks and then the rivers are on fire, you know? And once that, that leak has happened and, and everything's on, on fire, whenever it releases all of that, that, not only oil, but chemicals, real bad chemicals into the water systems, and it's ruined forever, there's no cleaning it up. You know, there, I, I just saw a, a deal the other day about where there's a couple of drops of benzene, I think that's what they, what they use, I, I, I think that's the word, just a couple of drops within a gallon of water, and it's, it's done, there's no change in it. And then they put, they pump in gallons of that chemical into these, these water, I mean into these pipelines to help that oil or whatever flow through. So one of the things is, is that, you know, what I was thinking about it was that, you know, we're doing this resolution and I think that's great, I think we could do more myself. You know, I, I see all these other, other nations that, that are going around, that are doing things, you know? I'm not saying that we could do things like by any means, but I would like to propose, you know, I, I was thinking last night, well, I've been thinking about it for a couple days, of having a fundraiser. Have a fundraiser where we can get the community involved, you know, where it's kind of a, maybe a little less strained from, from the, from the council's perspective, but we have a fundraiser, we could get the local tribes involved if they want to be involved. But what we do is we have an event here in, in the gymnasium. I was thinking of, you know, maybe having a little concert, I, myself, I've got a lot of connections from when I used to do shows and everything, I've got some artists that have already said that they would be willing to do live paintings and auction them off. You know, and I think the proceeds that we could have could help send supplies up there. I was thinking, you know, part of the entry, entry to the show be a, maybe five dollars and a couple of canned items, you know, and after everything's all set and done, we can take these supplies and take them up there. You know, it's, it's amazing that, if you guys have followed us, how many of our Native people and tribes across the country have, have gone up there. At one point, they said that there was about four thousand people up there. That's a lot, you know, this is a huge thing, and we have some Pawnee representation up there, some of these videos, I see our flag flying, and I've talked to one of the individuals up there, and he said that they have a individual Pawnee camp, each tribe has their own camps around there, and the colonists are there. We, the Sharo Council had just sent two chiefs up there, the Kidhaki Chief and the Chawee Chief, they're on their way up there, and that's just my, my thoughts and my feelings, I think that, you know, we can do a little, little more, and I think if, you know, I, I know there's some people that don't, that don't necessarily maybe agree with, with this, and that's fine, but there's a lot of people that do, and, and the ones that maybe don't agree, like I said, it's going to affect their, their, their children at some point, you know, if, if this isn't handled, you know, and, and addressed in a positive kind of way, so that's all I wanted to say.
Adrian, to add, everything you're saying that says true, but another thing that's not being reported too often, and I don't, I don't think it's being reported hardly at all, is the fact that the Indians who are there, they are being stared down by deputy US Marshals who are on, which I think is awful, insane, it's terrible.
Exactly, and then the latest report is that the state has cut off their water to the protesters stating that it's not because of their protesting, but it's due to state issues or, or their damage to their equipment or something to that effect. And I disagree with that because the, the Native Americans that are out there are US citizens as well as tribal members of Native nations, the first people of this land, and to be treated that way, to me, their, their, their actions by cutting off their water, that is, and that's the whole purpose of the fight, is fighting for our water rights, and they're cutting up off their life. To me, the way I interpret that is that we're going to cut your water off so you don't have life, so what does that mean, death? And, and that's the way I interpret it, and I feel, I feel very, very strongly against this pipeline and what it can do to our mother earth and to our water, our, our water, which is life. We can't live without water. What are we going to do if all of our water is damaged because of the almighty dollar for the oil and gas in there? You know, and it's not about money, it's not always about money, it's about life. If there's no life, what's the money going to do for us? You know what I mean? So I'm in support of, Andrew, I'm in support of Adrian, coordinating this event, and, I mean, I'll help as much as I can within my, with my limits, and I'll offer, you know, my children, they can help. I know.
You know, and I think it, you know, ultimately, it'll have to be a volunteer thing, you know, I mean, and this is, I think, for me, you know, not everybody can go up there, you know, but it'll give people an opportunity to feel like, hey, I, I was a part of that, you know, because this is something that's big, you know, you hear these, I've heard stories, you know, from some of my old folks, you know, about what's went on, you know, in the sixties and things like that, you know, and how they felt and how they had a part of that, you know, and, you know, there's been a call that's been, been sent out, you know, to all tribes and nations, and I think, you know, like I said, if we give our community and even the surrounding communities an opportunity to, to try to help out, then they should feel like they, they, they helped out, you know, in some kind of way that they were involved with that.
I agree, and I'd help you also. And, and volunteer one, one daughter.
Me too, I'll volunteer.
Well, let me get some things worked out and talk to some people, and see what I can get organized, and I'll, I'll email to you guys, and hopefully we get something planned here soon enough, and then we'll, we'll, we'll put it out on the Facebook page and everything else and try to get the community involved, so. And see what I can get organized and I'll, I'll email to you guys. Hopefully we get something planned here soon enough and then we'll, we'll, we'll put it out on the Facebook page and everything else and try to get the community involved, so.
So spread the word, everyone, we have connections with movie stars and...
Elijah, Elijah's a movie star.
Alright, any other, thank you, and Adrian. I thought you were on Andrew too. Alright, so any other items we're open forum?
I'll just add real quick to remind the council that, you know, this is kind of a pay it forward thing on, on my part because we also have the same issues here. Pipeline going through the Dakota Access Pipeline is, everybody's shocked that they're doing it, but every single day we have pipelines being built in Oklahoma through our jurisdiction, every single day. And so we have, these issues connect all of us, so we have to secure each other in this thing. So I'll just like to remind the folks that.
I just have one question for Darryl. Darryl, you said that you met with the five neighboring tribes up here for the Shalaco thing.
Yes.
I am really still interested and maybe we could do something by your, even at, at, at an executive level with Bruce and you as well, getting together, or at least inviting the other tribal governments within our, our area here for maybe a lunch and kind of, you know, some ideas and just conversation about what's going on with, with our lands and water and oil. Maybe they've got things going on and we can kind of leverage each other and kind of bounce information and get ideas and stuff. And I really think that we need to do that. I would really like to see something come together like that. Oto's, Ka's, Pankos, Pankos, whoever else. So that sound good?
That sounds good.
Maybe we can do that in November, before the weather gets really bad. So I don't doubt on us.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh-huh, thank you.
Well, if there's no other items, we will return this part. And I'm going to ask the council, do you want to go to lunch or go ahead with executive session? Okay, we're going to go, so we're, we're going to go into executive session, so I need a motion.
So move.
We got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, call for the vote.
That was Angela.
That was Angela, yes.
Darryl Walker.
Yes.
Amy Lilson, yes. Angela Thompson, yes. Sammy Addison, yes. Donna Hare, yes. Adrian Spatterhorse Chief, yes. Leanna Keaton, yes.
Okay, we are going into executive session. So I just want to thank all of the folks who showed up today, appreciate you all. And the gaming commission is number one. So we're going to ask the liquor control commission folks to exit the room also and then we will call you in.